It is the meeting ordinance authorizing FY 2016 budget amendment number two. If there are any public comments on this voting item, we will take them now. Seeing none, then we will move on to other public comments. This is an opportunity, if you'd like to come, comment on anything we have on our agenda, or future agenda, or anything else you'd like to discuss on city business, please state your first name and where you live.
Yeah, I'm Paul. I live on Carroll Avenue in Ward Three. At the, thanks for the time, and thanks for all you guys do. Eleven thirty last time. At the last meeting, the council separated additional legal fees for Tacoma Junction from a budget amendment which would have added money to the $30,000 that's already been appropriated and spent. I looked and I cannot find any documents on the city website to document the exact services, time spent, hourly rates, and receivables for this money. An additional amount of at least $3,300 has been spent without council authorization. And my questions, and I don't know if this is, I don't remember if this is budget amendment two, who authorized these monies being spent, and what are they for? And this may be in your regular order of business that I'm unaware of.
Thank you. Yeah, did you want to say?
Could I just ask, Mr. Dubner, could you be a little more specific about the $3,300, just so we can follow up on that?
Oh, sure. My under, in the original budget last year, there was $30,000 allocated to Tacoma Junction for legal fees. When you guys bifurcated or separated the additional legal fees from that $50,000 budget expenditure at the last meeting, it was stated, I'm not sure by whom, that $3,300 had already been spent, or guaranteed, or, I'm not sure of the precise word, but this seems to supersede the authority of the council, and it, I, you know, I didn't know if-
Thanks. That's all I needed.
Okay, thank you.
And did the city manager want to say anything at this point, or?
I think that's something that we need to get back to, Yolanda. We'll be having a discussion about that next week.
Great, thank you.
Your official piece delegate, and I want to say, thanks to the city of Tacoma Park, I stayed pretty well during the blizzard. I want to thank the police department for trying to get my healthcare workers over to my house, which couldn't be done, it was a virtual impossibility. And I want to thank the fire department for clearing the way for the healthcare work, for the emergency crew to get to my house. They evacuated me to the Washington Adventist Hospital for a few days, until the roads were clear. And I want to thank the Washington Adventist Hospital for getting me to the hospital, getting me my medication when I needed it. I wasn't really sick. The thing was, though, is I take some very dangerous medications, and I also, I also have to get at my food, and I can't see, and I can't walk right, and I'm blind, all three at once. So they evacuated me to the hospital. I want to thank everybody who did that. I was kind of a little PO'd when I had to go to the hospital, which I don't like to do. I think about other people with heart attacks shoveling the stuff who need it more than I do. But they wanted, they got me in there, and they took care of me. I want to thank the doctors and the nurses there, and I want to give my good wishes to all the patients who I met in there. And also, I want to thank Joe Pham, who brought me to the meeting tonight. I've been trying to get ways to get to the meetings, and it's almost impossible that he came through tonight. I want to thank him very much. And I want to thank other people who've done it through the years, over the last thirteen, fourteen years. I want to thank everybody for what they've done for me. I also want to ask them, I hope, I want to support the, anything to do with medical marijuana, because if it can alleviate the pain and the sickness of another human being, why not let us have it? Because many, many years ago, I had a crushing headache that they said I was going to have for the rest of my life, that they tried everything from morphine on down and couldn't get rid of it, till a friend of mine, twenty-seven years ago, gave me some weed. And I have not had to use it since then, and I have not had a crushing headache ever since then. I've been free from that for almost over twenty years. And I want to thank him for that, because I don't think I'd be here now. I'd probably be institutionalized from that, if I didn't have to have somebody. I don't want to deny the right to anybody else to have a chance of getting well, or alleviating some of their pain or nausea because of the use of marijuana. It was restricted by law. The doctors should have the law in the upper hand to use whatever they need to make life better for all of us. So please, listen to that when you discuss this tonight. I want this to be supported. Thank you very much for letting me share, and I hope to see you at next week's meeting. Love it, love it, love it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Robert Lanzo. I live at 7215 Cedar Avenue. I have two comments on the potential zoning amendment for cannabis dispensary, one short comment and one longer comment. A short comment is that I still find it amazing that we have to go to the county council to have a zoning amendment for Tacoma Park. We should be able to do that ourselves, and not have to go and have a council member introduce legislation on our behalf to have a zoning amendment. That being said, I'm opposed to the zoning amendment. I thought about this, and I thought about it from the standpoint of the patients who will be using this facility. They are medical patients. They're not drug users. The people who are dispensing, they are dispensing illegal product. It's no less legal than the Sudafed at CBS. And I don't think it's right to stigmatize this whole process, which is a legal process, by saying that it has to be in a certain place for a certain reason. The state had a long time to legalize this process. It's licensed. The people that are going to be patronizing have prescriptions. So what is the need to have this located in a certain place? I don't understand that part, because you already have a totally regulated process. So if you think about it from the standpoint of doctors and patients and providing a medical service, then you, there's no need for this zoning approach. You need to have this operated as a facility that the patients can get to, no more than you'd say a CBS can be, no more than 500 feet from the school. They have drugs at a CBS that you, that can kill you, but they're dispensed by a licensed person. This is no different. The cannabis is dispensed by a licensed person. So why do we need this extra thing that stigmatizes the people who are using this facility? So I suggest that we push this aside and not have any zoning amendment related to the cannabis dispensary. Thank you.
Evening. Good to see you all. I'm Seth Grimes, 7300 Willow Avenue. I'll start off by talking about two things that are on future agendas. One was supposed to be on tonight's, which is a plastic bag ban, which I support, and I hope you will move forward with that. I know that there's also a possibility of a state ban, which shouldn't preclude your acting. I wanted to bring up, though, another thing that's on next week's agenda, which is the business and multifamily unit recycling. I am concerned, because I spoke to my business landlord today, who is a landlord for Mark's Kitchen and the Middle East Restaurant, who was totally unaware of this. People in Mark's Kitchen do not have a recycling solution right now. This went into effect on January 1st. I do hope that the city will play catch-up here on the recycling, and think about that when you implement, if you implement, the plastic bag ban, doing this properly. The reason that I came out tonight, of course, is the medical marijuana dispensaries issue. I recognize that people in the community have very deep and passionate and well-founded opinions on various sides of this issue, but it's nothing like the volume that we've seen on previous issues that have come before the city, including dog parks, the pesticide ordinance, all kinds of things. But the people who have weighed in, in my own ward, in October, when the city council discussed this, the count was 22 to five, fine with this. People who commented to the county council were 13 to four in favor of, I'm sorry, in opposition to the ZTA. People don't feel real strongly, but the ones who do are, don't want this ZTA. I agree with Mr. Lanzo. This demonizes, it stigmatizes medical marijuana, which is a legitimate use. I think the fear of federal prosecution of a dispensary is not well-founded, but in any case, putting that aside, should the city of Tacoma Park be endorsing county action that, in my mind, signs us collectively onto the war on drugs? Drug-free school zones have had a disproportionate impact on minorities, prosecution, that is. Our prisons are full of people who are convicted of minor drug crimes. This ZTA signs you onto the war on drugs. Putting that aside, I believe it is not a well-founded, it is not a well-conceived approach to this issue. As you all know, because I've written to you, this ZTA covers only one school in Tacoma Park, so as I can tell, so far as I can tell, even if you extended it to 1,000 feet, and that is Don Bosco Cristo Rey School, near the intersection of 410 and New Hampshire Avenues. This ZTA, as formulated, leaves open the possibility of someone directly on the other side of Piney Branch Elementary School, or directly across the street from Piney Branch Elementary School, opening up a medical marijuana dispensary. It does not create an effective buffer zone around the schools. That's because Maple Avenue is in a commercial overlay zone that allows retail uses, this is confirmed with county authorities. Similarly, other schools in Tacoma Park are not protected by this, if protected is what you're looking for. This is not an effective ordinance. I think that it will not pass the county council. I think you would not be well-advised to bring this before the county council. It will not succeed. In any case, for reasons of war on drugs and effectiveness as an approach, I ask you to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your, the countdown timer's not active.
Oh.
I would have typed it a little bit better.
Okay. Thanks. Hey, let me, let me see. Does it, did it go on, the counter?
Are the lights on?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay.
But I'll, I'll try, hopefully successfully, to be brief. I'm David Borden. I, I'm a resident of Ward Five in the Sligo Flower Area. Lived in Tacoma Park for a little over ten years, DC for over twenty years. In my professional life, I run the organization StopTheDrugWar.org, which I'm the founder of, and we work on marijuana issues and many others. I, I had a letter published in Today's Voice, which at least some council members I know have reviewed, I have, and also sent it by email. And I'll, I'll briefly summarize the main points of that, but first, you know, first on a different angle from this, I, one of the benefits that my position in this movement gives me is that not only do I hear from experts and people working in the industry and so forth, but regular people, friends and acquaintances, also volunteer their observations and experiences because of knowing what I do. And one conversation with one of my oldest friends who lives in Los Angeles has stuck in my mind. Now LA has a vastly greater density of dispensaries than any city in Maryland is likely to have ever, and it used to have more, many more. And so this recollection is staying in his apartment at the time, once my friend and his wife and I ventured into the nearby neighborhood business district. They had a stroller in tow with an infant, who's now nine, I guess that's the number of years ago it was. And my friend, just matter-of-factly mentioned, they had three dispensaries there in the neighborhood, and just, just a fact of minor interest. It's, I suspect I would not have noticed them. And similarly, here in Washington, if you take a drive down Blair and then North Capitol, going downtown, as I often do, you'll pass two dispensaries, the Tacoma Wellness Center, and then further in, Capital City Care. I make that drive fairly often. I've never seen anyone walking in or out, and so I believe dispensaries have a fairly limited footprint, and, you know, I haven't seen anyone on this council express concern about the idea of a dispensary generally, but I think that there's certainly a subtext in communities, it's this kind of place that you don't want to have around. But, you know, I think, you know, well, I suspect, I'm out of time. I suspect that on the typical day, a dispensary would get more people in than the historical society does on average, but fewer than patronize the yoga studio. I'd be happy to see a place in my neighborhood, or the Junction, or Old Town. I think they are good for societies, as most businesses are.
Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue, on finances. In the last couple of years, the city has hired a new nuisance officer, bought a parking system for the Junction, and put the city attorney on retainer. With all these initiatives, there was a stated hope that they wouldn't harm the city's finances, in some cases by paying for themselves. At a time when we're contemplating a library renovation of up to $8 million, I believe it's important to measure our ability to correctly project financial impacts of new initiatives. Now that the latest annual audit is in hand, I hope the council will ask for financial assessment of these three initiatives. We've heard from council member mail about the city's pattern of underspending its budget. The good news, this problem is far preferable to a pattern of overspending. The bad news, where the underspending happens changes from year to year, so it's impractical to cut any particular department's budget, because underspending in one year may not repeat in the next. To end on good news, the city's budget has a non-departmental category. An allowance for projected total underspending might appear there, while departments continue to be fully funded. It would be cute to call this "underhead," as contrasted with overhead, but this is no place for cuteness. Such an allowance would be a magnet for budgetary abuse, set to whatever level balanced the budget. To avoid this, the city would need a considered policy for the amount of the allowance, the average underspending over some number of years, more conservatively, the minimum overspending over some number of years, or something else. The name used for the allowance should reflect the way it is set. Carefully including a non-departmental total underspending allowance in the budget may help us make our plans more closely match our reality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jane Machui, Ward Two. I'm concerned about the gentrification of my neighborhood. The, it's like white flight, instead of white flight, it's black flight, and I'm really concerned. My son's biracial, so I'm very concerned that our neighborhood is becoming upper white. You almost have to be wealthy now to get a home in Tacoma Park. I guess you all know that. And I'm in this section that used to be Prince George's County, okay? There was, I loved it moving there, because the people were economically and racially diverse. Now it's changed. All the houses are being built, built and made bigger, mostly by, like I said, wealthy whites. And not that I dislike wealthy whites, it's just that I don't want it to become another Bethesda. I do not, no. I love my neighborhood. I love the neighborhood, and I wanted to keep it that way, damn it. And I'm sorry, I don't know what to do about it, but I'm just voicing my frustration, and I wanted to thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Now we'll turn to council comments. None? All right. Councilmember Schultz.
One of the things that I've been working on, sort of behind the scenes for, for over a year, is trying to figure out a way of which we can encourage optimal development in the crossroads area with the gradual realization of the purple line coming. We've been talking about the purple line for as long as many of us can remember, seemingly, but construction is expected to be actually begin sometime this year, this calendar year. And it's, there's some potential that's associated with the purple line in terms of its having an economic influence on the crossroads area. The crossroads area is a very vital part of the city tax base, but it's basically underdeveloped by most people's standards. Most of the properties there are buildings that have been, were built in the 30s, 40s, 50s, and maybe 70s. Almost nothing has been built in the last 25 years, except maybe for the Walgreens. One of the things that's concerning is that while on our side of the University Boulevard, we have the Crossroads Development Authority, which has a full-time executive director, it's well-run, and it's doing lots of good things. On the other side, on the Prince George's side of the area, there's, there's no promotional or marketing entity whatsoever, and seemingly very little interest by the Prince George's County in trying to do anything about it. So I've been trying to do something about it, talking to people in this city, in Montgomery County, and in Prince George's County, networking and trying to see if we can't get something, some sort of a bi-county partnership or promotional marketing organization set up to help promote the crossroads, all of it, so that businesses will benefit, developers will see the opportunity to do redevelopment and proceed with it, rather than just continuing to put off all that sort of thing. And we can actually begin to see the Tacoma Langley Sector Plan get realized, because it has tremendous potential. So I don't have anything specific to report today. I'm meeting in a couple weeks with staff of the Prince George's County Economic Development Agency, talked with other people over there, the head of the Housing Department in the county, I've talked with people in Montgomery County as well, and we're gradually, and also with the state of Maryland, Maryland Department of Planning. And these are just conversations to see what we can do, and I wanted just to let residents know here tonight that this is something that I am working on, have been working on. It's my, my ward, and I feel like it's my responsibility of all of us on this city council to take the lead on this. And so if anybody's interested in learning more about this, or has ideas, wants to contribute some time and thought on it, I'd be delighted to hear, delighted to hear from whoever that might be. I think we'll eventually get, get somewhere on this, but it's going to take some time. But hopefully, in the coming year, maybe we can get, we'll be able to have community, area-wide community meetings involving the commercial property owners, business owners, neighborhood associations, and a lot of the institutions, University of Maryland, both the planning departments for both counties, as well as the Maryland Transit Administration, State Highway Administration, and other interested parties. I think there's a lot of people that see themselves as being stakeholders in that area. So I'm excited about the idea, and I just wanted to share with people some of this, the fact that I'm trying to push this thing forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Can I go last? I have a number of things.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Karashi.
Can I go second to last? I just have one announcement. On November, we passed a resolution welcoming Syrian refugees to Tacoma Park and their placement, with the understanding that we have very limited jurisdiction, if any, in that area. But I think what we did say during comments in regards to that resolution is that the real hard work starts when community members and religious organizations and nonprofits get together in the community, many of whom are experts in the area, in creating and fostering an environment where that could be a possibility one day. So I just am announcing, as I announced last week, we are having a Syrian refugee coordinating meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM here at the Community Center in the Azalea Room. Mr. Nephew, who was here last week, is with an organization that will be here, among other experts. I will be there as well, just to really listen, but if you're interested, please come by tomorrow at 7:00 PM at the Azalea Room. Thank you.
Councilman McCollough?
Thank you. I'll be at the event tomorrow, by the way, so thanks for reminding us. People may recall that we recently had the provost of Montgomery College present to us, it was on the January 20th, and we talked about our concerns about the lack of consultation by Montgomery College with their facilities master plan. So on Monday of this week, on the first, the board of directors of the college had their monthly meeting, it was postponed a week because of the storm, and I testified there. I circulated my testimony to the listservs in my district, and I think to my colleagues up here. And since, at that point, I expressed concern about the lack of consultation, the board did approve the master plan, and it became public today. And so, just briefly, and it's a really long document, so I've just had a chance to go through it pretty quickly this afternoon, but what it talks about is, people may know the campus is sort of divided into two parts, the part that's in North Tacoma, which is in a mainly residential area, and then a part on sort of the other side of the tracks, which is technically in Silver Spring, and I think more suited to larger buildings, where there are some larger buildings. The plan calls for replacing and renovating five of the large buildings in the residential area in North Tacoma, replacing them with bigger buildings, and not adding it all to the campus in the other section. And I don't object to the idea of modernizing the buildings, and there may be a need to rebuild some of them in North Tacoma, but I'm not sure why we should have all of the construction taking place there. And you can imagine redoing five buildings and replacing them with something bigger is going to cause havoc with traffic and just generally living there for a while. So in the plan, they do talk about the possibility of purchasing other property out on Fenton Street, and/or using property they already control on Georgia Avenue, but none of that would happen until after 2023. And for some reason, even though the last master plan was the master plan from 2006 to 2016, you would think this one would be 2016 to 2026, but for some reason, it's 2013 to 2023. No one's been able to exactly explain why that is. But in any case, the focus will be just on rebuilding in North Tacoma. So now it's with the State Higher Education Commission. We talked about this previously, but I'd like to suggest that maybe we send a letter to the commission expressing our concerns. They have contacted our state elected officials about it, so we can talk about that later, but I just offer that up as a, as something that I think we should do. Thank you.
Are you ready now?
Yes. Thank you. First thing, there is an invitation.
Do you mind if I just say one other thing? Several people did contact me about the lack of good clearance of the snow around the schools, which is, and the playgrounds, which I know is a county issue, and some other areas controlled by the county. So I know we're talking about this after incident report, that we're going to be doing an analysis of the storm. I think a key part of it is figuring out what we need to do with the county to ensure that there's clear written responsibility as to who is responsible for clearing the different playgrounds and school areas. So just throw that in.
I would just like to actually, since you brought that up, council, county council member Hans Reimer actually met with the folks in the Parks Department today to specifically talk about the Piney Branch Playground. And so I have gotten an email from him. I have not yet had the chance to read, but he is aware of it, and as I said, our county council members are looking for input for when they have their discussion on February 9th. So if there are other people in the community, I've been sending people to their offices to make sure they get that feedback.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Sorry, Joe.
Now you're up.
First thing, Washington Adventist University is having two meetings to talk about their building project on Maplewood. building project on Maplewood. The first meeting is February 17th at 7:00 PM. It's going to be held in Wilkinson Hall, that's on Flower Avenue. And if you can't make that meeting, they're giving us another opportunity. That would be on March 16th, same time, 7:00 PM. It's on the first floor of the building. You can't miss it, it's right by the new ballpark. Angie Cruz, the Director of Communications, is asking anyone that would like to attend the meeting to RSVP. I don't know if Angie's going to hate me for this, but I'm going to give you her number. Her number is 301-891-4134, and that, once again, is 301-891-4134. So I think it'd be very good if residents, you don't just have to live in Ward 5, to attend these meetings, to see what the university has planned for this new building that they want to construct on Maplewood. Switching gears, I want to talk to, talk about a couple bills that are coming out of the General Assembly. First, I'd like to address former councilmember Seth Grimes' statement about the plastic bag ban bill. My understanding from Candace Donahoe that that bill will not apply to municipalities. So it's very important for us to weigh in and to implement our own regulations. I was the one who asked for the bill to be pulled, the reason being is the Executive Director of Trash-Free Maryland couldn't make it today to discuss why this bill is so important, so she can only come before us on February 24th. So that's why it was pulled. So big building, a very big, important bill for us, the Highway User Revenue Bill that MML, Maryland Municipal League, has drafted. It has a bill number in the Senate, it's SB 0585. This bill will hopefully, if it passes, get municipalities back to the funding level that we were supposed to be at before the Great Recession. The sponsor line on this bill is very important. Senator, Montgomery County Senator Nancy King is on it, Doug Peters, and on the House side, Pamela Bettel and Ann Healy. So this bill is very important. Residents can send notes to General Assembly members expressing why they should pass this bill. Highway user revenue is critical for Tacoma Park. In today's meeting of the Legislative Committee, we discussed a whole bunch of bills, and supposedly this is the first time we never, or the first time that we did not agree to support one bill. So I'm just going to highlight a couple bills. One, we asked for a fiscal note asking for an income tax rebate for military retirement individuals 65 years or older, to see what the impact of that bill would be on municipalities. Another bill that we asked for fiscal impact on is an income tax exemption for individuals 65 years or older. MML staff think that that's going to have a huge impact on the entire state, so before we take a position, we want to see how much of it is going to reduce our revenues for municipalities. Another bill that was, that came before us that I think people should know about is the certificates of candidacy that this bill was brought before us because one particular election, staff wouldn't want, didn't want to name it, but somebody was not allowed to run for office in the state of Maryland, and it was because there was a mess-up in the clerk's office. No offense, Jesse. And so this individual got the member of the General Assembly to draft a bill to address it. MML Legislative Committee is going to oppose this, not just because this is just a one-time event, but we do not want the state to encroach on municipal election law. So eventually, I'm going to put together a page on my website to talk about these bills, but there's so many of them. This time around, 1,800 bills were dropped. We had, I guess last year, there were so many new members of the General Assembly, so now all of a sudden, everybody knows how to draft legislation, so we're going over a whole bunch of bills. So I'm going to give residents a chance to see what's going on, so just give me a little time, and I'll make the bills available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that update. Let's see, for me, over the next two days, tomorrow morning, and tomorrow and Friday, I will be in Annapolis at the Maryland Municipal League's Mayor's Conference. Can I ask the City Manager?
Thank you. I want to follow up on Councilmember Kovar's mention about Montgomery College. We have updated the project directory for the Montgomery College Facilities Master Plan on the city's website. People can go to the website, look under Initiatives, Project Directory, go to the Montgomery County Facilities Master Plan item, and there's a link to the, to the entire draft plan there for people who want to look at it.
Can I just?
Yes.
So within that, then you have to go down, there's like eight different links, you have to go to the one that says TPSS Campus.
Right. There's an overview, and there's some other things, so it's all there. Do want to follow up on a request from Councilmember Siemens about the status of the improvements to the Maple Avenue crosswalks. We're still waiting for the state to finalize its review of the state roster school funding projects, which includes the 1,000 block of Elm Avenue as well. We're expecting to get those approvals done so that the work can be done this fiscal year. However, we will be repainting the crosswalks as soon as we're able to do so, probably in March.
Great. Thank you very much.
Has been mentioned that we have the community conversation on affordable housing this week, and I've attached to your copy of my notes, the agenda, which is really spectacular, and I want to toss out some kudos to especially Sarah Dane, to the Housing and Community Development Office, for really doing a lot of work to get these speakers together, and a very nice program. Wanted also note that we've got a couple neat programs coming up that we're helping to sponsor. One, we're sponsoring Stump the Chump. This is the Neighborhood Energy Challenge Edition, and I'm not sure that chump is the right word for our Sustainability Manager, Gina Mathias, but she will be at Historic Tacoma on 7:00 PM on Thursday, February 18th, and she can help review any proposals that you, that homeowners have for energy improvements of their homes, to see if it makes sense. So you have kind of an unbiased look at the, at the different proposals that people may have gotten about improvements to their homes. We also have on February 23rd, and just heads up, that there'll be a neighbor-to-neighbor discussion about the school district's budget, and that will be here, co-sponsored also with the Tacoma Foundation. And we have Denise Brackalili-Stolz from the School District's Office of Community Engagement and Partnerships as a coordinator, as a facilitator for that discussion with the public. And we also have a 2016 Safe Grow Lawn Care Event, Switching to Organic Lawn Care Methods on March 1st. So people who are interested in knowing how to do that, once the snow melts and they're looking at the next step, it's an opportunity to see how you might do some transitioning. And that's all I have to share. Any questions?
Just a quick follow-up, a reminder to the City Manager that I had that one request about whether a snow removal citation had or had not been issued.
Yeah, and I'm not sure the answer.
And I think just in general, whenever we do our sort of post-op snow blizzard analysis, knowing how many citations were issued to commercial and, commercial or residential, like getting that breakdown would be, would be helpful. And then just since I have the mic, I thought I'd note that Gina reported that at one point the city was in, I think, second place in the Georgetown Energy Prize competition. Just for a brief moment, or second or fifth, or something like that, we're now down at 20th. And she said it goes up and down all the time.
It goes up and down, but you know.
I just thought I'd hold on to that one moment where we were in the top five.
Well, I will say that if you do your Energy Challenge improvements, that will help us, so I'd like to.
Is there a deadline for getting that information in?
Yes, but I don't know.
Because I did my challenge, I just haven't, I completed.
Oh, you need to.
I haven't submitted it.
Please do.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, question? The community conversation, the agenda that you have attached here.
Yes.
Is that available in a way that I can forward it to all the listservs in my ward?
Sure. If you, again, if you go to the website under Initiatives, there's a Community Conversation tab, and it has all of the information, including the, this agenda posted on that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. And we certainly want people from all across the community to participate.
Yeah, I'm trying to get, do the best I can to get people aware of it.
The other thing that's on that, on that tab on the website is an opportunity to fill in questions or comments. You can do that in advance, and that gets submitted right from the website. So even if somebody doesn't think they can make it, but they have an opinion, they can share that, and we're welcoming those comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Does the City Clerk have any legislative updates?
I don't have anything beyond what Councilmember Smith said, although there may be an update on the stormwater of the HB 82 on stormwater, that progress is being made on that, correct? So to enable the municipalities to collect stormwater fees from other government entities and vice versa. So I guess when there's news on that, we'll share it.
And I'll just say that Delegate Barve, who chairs the committee, that that will come through, he spoke today, I, I was a little late, so I didn't see it, but he was surprised that the legislation was coming before him, so we'll see. We're trying to make sure that everybody pays down the line on stormwater.
All right, let's move on. Before we move to our first agenda item, I just want to check in with everyone regarding the request from Councilmember Kovar about a letter to the State Higher Education. We had discussed this before our winter recess, and everyone had agreed at that, at that time that the next step would be to send a letter following up, and I just want to check to make sure that everyone is still in agreement on that, and if anyone had any other questions or follow-up.
I mean, just the one follow-up I'd add is that, based on what you said about the construction being disproportionately focused on Tacoma Park and the complete absence of any heads-up from college about that, that I guess I would make our comments that much sharper.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I think our plan is hopefully to get that drafted and out in the next week and a half, two weeks, yeah. All right, terrific. All right, let's move on then to our voting item. Tonight, we have the Second Reading Ordinance authorizing the FY 2016 Budget Amendment Number Two. Does the City Manager want to?
Just to note that I added a couple pieces of information. The, one was actually to delete the item related to the Tacoma Junction legal contracts, and just leave in $2,000 in that legal contracts item for the expenses related to the Washington-Ventis Hospital Certificate of Need Review. Also, I did try to provide a little bit more information in the fiscal impact part of the cover sheet about how much unappropriated funds are being used by the additional expenses here, and some of the categories that have come in look to be higher than, we're receiving more revenue in some categories than we expected, to just show how that offsets a bit, as Councilmember Mail requested.
Okay, great. All right, does anyone want to move the ordinance?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, yes, I forgot. Thank you.
All right, I'll move it.
Anyone second? Councilmember Schultz moved it, second?
Second.
Councilmember Kreshi, second. Any discussion before we take the vote? Councilmember Mail?
I just thank you for the additional information and the clarifications in the packet, I thought that was helpful. Just, just one note, it's minor that the cost for the police vehicles changed between the first and the last by a few thousand dollars, but it doesn't substantially matter, I just noted it in passing.
Okay, I mean, it was, I will go back and check, because I don't, there wasn't a change in the number. Go ahead, make sure that there's no typo.
I went back and forth because I was trying to understand some of the differences, and I was pretty sure that the narrative had two different numbers between this week and last. But I don't think it substantially affects.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't affect my position on it, for example.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the, do you need to call the roll, right? You need to call a roll, okay, that's right, because of the second reading, okay. Then the City Clerk?
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Kreshi?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So now we will move on to our first work session to discuss the possible zoning text amendment on the cannabis dispensary. I think before I open this up to my colleagues to speak, I wanted to just say a few words. One, I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to write in and call, not only us, but the county council on this issue. And, you know, I just want to give a bit of background, because we haven't, the council hasn't talked about this since October, and as I learned last week, sometimes it's good to go back before we move forward with our conversations. The discussion of a medical marijuana dispensary in Tacoma Park came to our attention particularly this past fall. I think we were actually at a council meeting when Councilmember Mail and I started getting emails and requests to find out what were the guidelines, or, you know, the requirements for a marijuana dispensary, medical marijuana dispensary. And when we looked at the state law, it became clear, as people have discussed tonight, that the way the law was stated, it said a dispensary was required to meet all local zoning and planning requirements, and there is no further formal procedure set out for input by local government. So in Tacoma Park, as it was pointed out, our zoning and planning authority pretty much rests with the county. However, we do have opportunity to weigh in on those things. We have in the past passed resolutions, talked to our members of the county council when we want to discuss zoning issues. So back in the fall, when this became an issue, the position of our county council at that time, as was stated in the local newspapers, was that they had decided to take a wait-and-see approach to where the dispensaries would be located. A number of residents had approached us and asked for more specific understanding of where medical marijuana dispensaries could be located. A number of counties around the state of Maryland had been moving forward with this discussion. For example, in Baltimore County, and a number of others had put out guidelines regarding minimum distance between a dispensary and residential areas, minimum distance between a dispensary and a school park or playground, minimum setbacks, and other things like that. So we, I talked to a number of other folks who are pushing forward with wanting medical marijuana dispensaries, and in fact, many of the organizations, advocacy groups that look at this issue also talk about this idea of a buffer zone that has been raised already this evening. And so a number of us, residents, talked to our county council members, and county council member Tom Hucker responded to our inquiries and said he would look into this issue. And while we'll talk about this specific ZTA that we have in front of us, I do want to take the time to actually thank Councilmember Hucker for responding to the constituents, for raising this issue, so that we can have a for raising this issue so that we can have a conversation and taking an active role in thinking about the future of our communities and not just a wait-and-see approach. I have and will continue to express my support for medical marijuana, but I also support community discussion and clear guidelines on where dispensaries are located. Support for medical marijuana and support for a thoughtful process of where to locate dispensaries are not mutually exclusive. And we're having this discussion this evening because our friends, families, and residents with cancer, AIDS, glaucoma, chronic pain, and other health problems, as well as potential dispensary owners and some of our, and the people in our community, have the right to expect and really to demand from us that we do our best to ensure that dispensaries are in locations that do not put patients, owners, or neighbors at risk, either whether it's sudden closure from federal government's backward drug laws or further stigmatization of the use of medical marijuana. So tonight, we're going to have the conversation. First, I'd like to ask our council, my colleagues on the council, if we could ask the city staff for any clarifying questions so that we understand that we're all on the same page, and then move to what action we would like to take, if that is amenable to everyone. So at first, we could just kind of have a conversation and make sure that we have all the issues straight, and then we can move to the action steps. Anyone want to jump in?
Oh, yeah.
I don't know that I want to jump in.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm happy to try to answer questions, and we do have staff here who also may be helpful.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I know before the meeting, we had some discussion going on about the way the planning board actually works, and it might be helpful if you could clarify that as far as what the city council role is in these types of planning and zoning decisions.
Well, there's, I think, a couple things. Under our state law, Tacoma Park is, does defer to the planning board with, under Maryland National Capitol Park and planning, for planning and zoning activities. And they are in charge of coming up with master plans and the zoning. However, the city council is encouraged to weigh in on items often, and the position of the council has some weight with both the planning board and as it moves on to the county council, which serves as a district council for zoning purposes. If there was a position that the county council or the planning board took that was contrary to the position of the city council, they would need a supermajority for it to carry through. And so that's, that's the extra weight that the city council has in that. You know, certainly, there's also deference to a local community just in general when it can. So there's, I think, those two elements. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think the one point that came up, and maybe Councilmember Kovar had talked with you about this, and that is if, if the county planning board is actually taking no, or the county council taking, you know, proposing no measures at this time, just going with what we have now for zoning, can the city council, you know, pass something that causes the county to take action?
I think that's a good legal question. I think that there's, there may very well be an answer to that, that if the council, if the city council had a resolution for the planning board or the county council acting as district council to act, they might have to have a supermajority to say, no, we're not going to act. I think that's a good question for the legal counsel. That's not been something that we've tried, that I've known. But it seems like it's a possibility, the way that.
Hopefully, we won't get to that.
So that's, it would be something that we would want to investigate.
Right. And then, I know it's unclear right now what this council is going to do, but is this a permanent decision, or is it something we could say, well, we want to review it again in a year, or?
In general, it is not appropriate to make lots of changes with zoning text amendments. They, they're fairly significant actions, so I'm not familiar with, like, a zoning text amendment with a, you know, a sunset clause. I've not seen that. So I think that you would need to.
Because it gives property owners specific rights?
That's right. I mean, I think that, I think that you should be comfortable with what you're asking for from the county council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I guess, I, we'll just second some of what the mayor said about public outreach on this issue. It's been, it's just been interesting to get, and really, a big part of it was people just simply having no information whatsoever initially. And so we think about, for example, us trying to get information about new policies. Former Councilmember Grimes talked about recycling requirements and how we need to do a good job, but the outreach by the state in terms of what's going to happen next was nonexistent. So, you know, that's, that's partly why we're where we are, I think, and why residents just, just were sort of fumbling around, trying to figure out what was going on. I would say that the scenario I see, if you sort of play this out in the state of Maryland, my assumption, which others may disagree with, is that we're now in essentially a pilot phase for medical marijuana with two dispensaries being allowed per state senate district, and that that will exist for some period of time. I'm assuming some relatively brief period of time once they're up in operation. And then the state will look at that, and my assumption, based on other states, is they'll look at that and they'll say, you know, we can do this. This is providing a medical benefit, health or pharmaceutical benefit to residents. Other states will have progressed faster on the issue, and the state will take additional legislative action to, you know, ease this up in some additional way, specifically in terms of number of dispensaries allowed and potentially production facilities, farms, which are also being licensed by the same commission at the state level. And then we'll go down that path of expanded medical marijuana, and presumably, there's also another track, which is decriminalization or full legalization, and those tracks will be discussed by state legislature as well. And so I see us as being in this sort of early phase right now of it being a pilot. And thinking about the number of residents who have very strong views, who are very concerned about a dispensary in close proximity to them, what, a version of what Councilmember Tom Hucker has proposed, does not seem unreasonable, a version that is focused on school zones. And I say a version of that because I think the 500 feet is, the benefit I see is focused on 1,000 feet, and I'll explain that in a minute. But the idea of focusing on these areas around schools and not, not encouraging or having the state commission not focus on dispensaries, locating dispensaries in those locations initially, makes sense. It is a state commission decision, but the state commission decision will be guided by local, i.e. county, zoning rules. And so the, the commission could well decide that it's not going to put either of the two dispensaries in Tacoma Park or Silver Spring for lots of reasons. But if the county passes a ZTA, that that would be one of, that would certainly inform their choices of potential dispensaries that have proposed a location within this distance of schools. And I guess all of that is a long way of saying I favor the city council taking action to encourage the county council to pass a ZTA that has a 1,000-foot buffer around recognized schools. To me, that's valuable because there's clearly a business risk based on, and this is just based on a quick Google search, but you can find the official DOJ documents from, I think, roughly 2010 to present, associated with enforcement action that DOJ or district attorneys took or threatened in California. And I think I found two letters in California, Colorado, and one other state, it may have been Washington. And that was not a scientific survey, that was just a quick look for DOJ letter, marijuana dispensary, school zone as the basis. So I think it's not unreasonable to try to create a service for our residents. The zones, whether they're 500 feet or 1,000 feet, would leave a very significant part of Tacoma's commercial areas unaffected by the ZTA. So to try to create a service for residents to be able to get access to a licensed provider to provide medical marijuana, to allow that to happen, but also do so in a way that lowers business risk for any of the dispensaries or a dispensary that, if it were to be licensed here, to be able to operate without, with a lower fear of federal enforcement action or a lower fear of the severity of the potential enforcement action that may be taken against them, per the comment we got from, from Mr. Borden, which I very much appreciated. And I thought it was interesting that when the owner of the Tacoma Wellness Clinic or Center came and spoke to us, the way he spoke about it was, you know, well, there's no rule in DC that says we couldn't have located within 1,000 feet of a school, but we thought it made sense not to thumb our nose more than we had to at, at federal authorities. And I believe that their location is more than 1,000 feet, both from the nearest school in the District of Columbia, as well as 1,000 feet from the Tacoma Children's Center in, in, it's in DC. That's still in DC, but it's on the Tacoma side of, Tacoma Park side of DC. So I think there's a way that we can really do both, where the action that residents are supporting, and it seems like there's a pretty small, it's not a sharp divide in the community, it's about, you know, let's focus on these areas, not those areas. There's been a debate about, and I think a healthy one, healthy questions about, does it make sense to have these as storefronts versus, versus, because they have, because of various restrictions in state law about, they're, for example, they're not allowed to display anything that indicates marijuana. There's one letter we received about blackened windows, you know, not being able to see inside. So some of those things may suggest it doesn't make sense to have dispensaries use up what we have as fairly limited storefront space. I'm not proposing any action on that, but I just think it's, you know, it's an interesting, good discussion about how we use commercial space, how we provide a service like this. I think of it almost more like a doctor's office, and that's, that is certainly the way the Tacoma Wellness Center has presented itself, almost more like a doctor's office where you get that service. So, you know, I think that's all been healthy, and the feedback that we've gotten, both from people who are, who are for having dispensaries and people who are against having dispensaries or against having dispensaries in certain locations defined by this ZTA, has been interesting, and I think it's a process where the community has already had a chance to learn more than we knew six months ago. And the benefit of taking an action like this is that it would allow the pilot phase to play out at the state level, to go through two dispensaries per district, and have everyone, or maybe at least more people, have the same experience that you described, which is people get used to the idea that there are dispensaries in the neighborhood in Silver Spring nearby, and nothing bad happens. And so it's a, it's an easier progression and an evolution toward an expanded dispensary program versus the alternative, which is right now, we've got, you know, people who would be really upset, and we could potentially find a way to, to learn more and move forward together as opposed to not doing so. So to get to some more questions for the city staff, I appreciate that Roz Grigsby sent around some information about what other jurisdictions in Maryland have done, and I just haven't had a chance to review that. So if the city manager or other staff want to describe anything in there tonight that's relevant, I welcome that, but it could also be that we just read it after the fact. And then my other comment on your second question was, you know, I support the city taking action to support the ZTA, but again, an amended ZTA to focus on 1,000 feet, because I think the 500-foot doesn't solve the problem of the potential federal enforcement action. I'm interested in the, if there's any more information on the status likelihood or other action by DOJ or district attorneys, but I don't sense that there's one comprehensive answer on that, so I don't think we're going to make progress there.
Councilmember Mayor, if I could just ask you for a clarification. You said ZTA of 1,000 feet in, from recognized schools. Recognized schools for you means?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't meaning to be specific in that, in that conversation. The definition that I've been able to find in, and it's hard to find, and there's state-by-state definitions as well, but in the federal law seems to recognize, it's a fairly inclusive list of schools, including pre-Ks, public schools, private schools, and I would just focus on that definition because presumably that federal definition is the one that makes the difference associated with the severity of the violation.
Great. I just, there's so many moving pieces with this, I want to make sure we're all. Does the city manager want to respond to Councilmember Mail's question? Or?
Well, I know there has been some interest in, in having Ms. Grigsby go through her, the information that she shared late today. Roz, would you have a chance?
And this was put out at people's place?
Hi. This is just a quick overview of some of the actions that have been taken by other jurisdictions in the state of Maryland regarding the medical cannabis laws. As you can imagine, they vary widely. There are towns that have enthusiastically supported and partnered with particularly grow facilities, I think, and supported their applications to the Maryland Medical Cannabis Commission. There are others who have been more cautious. I, we can put these doc, this page up later if it's useful to people, but there, I tried to track where these resolutions and ordinances stand, so some have been passed and some are in process. Cumberland, Easton, Hancock, and Washington County particularly stand out as moving forward, partnering, approving sites, and supporting various kinds of applications that have gone in.
Ms. Grigsby, does that include retail locations? Are they supporting retail locations?
It depends. So the ones that have gotten the most attention tend to be grow and manufacturing facilities. Some include dispensaries in those facilities. Again, there are a lot of moving parts. But I included links to read the ordinances yourselves, if that's helpful, and I can dig deeper if you want more of a breakdown. There are five jurisdictions that I know of, and I was given my starting point from the Maryland Municipal League, because they're also tracking this, who have introduced some kind of buffer zone or distance in their zoning to use in citing not just dispensaries, though I think that perhaps Tacoma Park, city council's interest is on dispensaries, so I'll limit my remarks to that. Of those, four have approved them, Anna Rendell, Baltimore County's approved two different kinds of zoning text amendments or their equivalent. Charles County has something in the process but not yet done, and Westminster's adopted a new ordinance. So most of those have a 1,000-foot buffer. They vary on exactly what that 1,000-foot buffer is for. Some specify K-312 schools, some specify schools and, K-312 as well as preschools. Charles County included daycare, substance rehab facility, and other dispensaries. These all include another buffer from other dispensaries. So several, Anna Rendell, Baltimore County, and Cambridge had a 2,500-foot buffer from a dispensary between dispensaries, from one to another. And those, Anna Rendell, Cambridge, Charles County, and Westminster had a 1,000-foot buffer from schools, sometimes exactly from property line to property line, sometimes not quite as clearly specified. And Baltimore County had a 500-foot buffer from K-312 schools. I'm happy to answer questions as I can, but I think that might be the highlights that would be most relevant to tonight's discussion.
I just have one sort of follow-up question, which is, this hasn't come up, and I assume it's the case that there's no, there's no tax or other revenue associated with either a farm or a dispensary. Is that right, under state law? I mean, there's sort of like.
Do you mean in, in the local jurisdictions?
No, no, I mean, I mean, nothing that would.
Under state law?
There's no money in it for city government or for county government, other than simply having a business that produces revenue.
So there's significant fees that the applicant or license or license holder pays to the state?
Mm-hmm.
I don't now remember if the state's designated what those fees are for, or if they feed back to the local jurisdiction.
But there certainly is, is different kinds of tax money, depending on the business.
Ms. Grigsby, can I actually ask you a question? Is, I know, I know you were looking at this from the standpoint of how it's relevant to the ZTA we're discussing this evening, but is there statistics out there, or are there? there statistics out there about the number of individuals in the state of Maryland or in Montgomery County that actually are prescription holders for medical marijuana? And maybe you didn't look into that, but-
So this-
There wouldn't be any yet.
There would not be any in the state of Maryland yet?
Right, right.
Because they haven't-
But I guess how the national sort of statistics, you know, I presume that they do some correlative statistical analysis about what they project moving forward. I don't know if there's anything like that.
The restrictions are so different state to state. The specifics of diseases that can be prescribed for, and how many doctors can have authority to, they don't use the term prescribe, but designate. So I I haven't seen any aggregate data of a percent of the national population that might be eligible for a prescription.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grigsby, did you look at the state of Washington, the state of Colorado, before they completely legalized marijuana and see if they had all these setbacks or restrictions?
So I did a lot of digging around before council discussed this in October, and it's not all as fresh in my mind now as it was then, and I can go back and and put some of that together again. But again, the states did it very differently. Colorado and California were very liberal in their designation of various facilities. DC, for instance, was very contained when they launched it. So I don't now remember, I remember reading about the transition from strictly medical marijuana to recreational in both Washington and Colorado, and the impact on dispensaries was kind of surprising, because the original, the initial research indicated that while you might think dispensaries would be first in line for recreational, it didn't happen that way. And some of the dispensaries were closing as people were going to recreational facilities instead. But as far as what transpired from that transition based on what their starting point, I don't have that available.
Okay.
Councilmember Smith, did you have another comment? You want to go?
Oh, yeah, just a couple. Regarding drugstores, the Walgreens, Rite-Aids, can you remind us, are they required to be so many feet from a school or education facility?
No, the the things that I know of that have distance requirements are liquor stores and some things like that. You know, one of the things that I think is a little bit of a is a difference is that most drugstores sell other products, so they're not restricted to who can enter the door or, you know, the kind of things that are displayed in the windows. So there's a difference in that. There are a few very specialty pharmacies that are specialties pharmacies, and that's all they do. But but there are not rules that I know of that have distance requirements from a standard drugstore.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, first off, I support legalizing marijuana. I think the state of Maryland is moving in that direction. We will have these this trial run for a couple of years, but I do think the General Assembly will legalize marijuana in the state of Maryland. It has worked in the state of Washington. Washington has not fallen apart. It has worked in the state of Colorado. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm coming back. Colorado has not fallen apart. There's a great documentary produced by CNN on Breckenridge, Colorado, city similar to Tacoma Park, 4,000 people, a million people come out there to go skiing, they're having this, they had this same debate. And the town didn't really change, you know? I mean, people still went to school there, people still had a great time during their festivals, the character of the town didn't change. And I don't think that's going to happen here in Tacoma Park. I think this city has been a progressive leader of many issues, like being a sanctuary city. I mean, that means that we do not comply with the federal government when it comes to things regarding immigration law.
Love it.
So why would we all of a sudden say, you know what, we're going to be very conservative and put up all these restrictions for something that I don't see is that big of a deal? It is stigmatizing too many people, the war on drugs. We need to step up and say enough is enough, and we're not going to do this anymore and allow people to use marijuana in a safe way, just like they use alcohol. I'm not saying that people can just do whatever they want, but as long as you're an adult, you should be able to use it. So I don't support any type of ZTA that's coming out of the county council. I think those are, that's just too much of a restriction on it. I would rather see more like 250 feet from a school. But I don't think that we should put these type of restrictions on medical marijuana, which is going to eventually become legalized in the state of Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. I'm I voted for the medical marijuana, and I was chair of a gubernatorial campaign, that of Heather Mazir, who favored legalization. I was an advisor to her on that campaign. So I'm supportive of moving in the direction that Jared's talking about. I don't think any of the people who that heard speak so far, or any of the people who sent us emails or contacted us, have said, don't allow it at all within within the borders of the city. It's really just a question of how how open that is. For me, I'm not that worried about the potential for the federal piece of this, because I think the those who are looking at going into business in this know that and are taking the risk and are aware of it. Yes, I think, as Councilmember Mail said, there have been a few instances of more rogue kind of DEA people or prosecutors trying to take action on that, but I don't think that's a huge risk. Can I honestly, I think that even if we, you know, in the in the Trump administration or some other Republican administration, I think most I think most conservatives are supportive of this on healthcare, medical use of marijuana, even if not in the broader legalization. So I think that's a a risk that's built in, and the people who want to do it presumably understand that. I think some of the other questions, though, are legitimate, because, yes, it is a sort of legal product, but CVS isn't selling it. It's being sold a different kind of a place, and you can't have advertising outside it, and it could be mostly cash kind of business. And we've heard from people who object to it from an economic development point of view as well. I think it's perfectly reasonable to have that kind of conversation. You know, we talked about not so much me yet, because I'm the new kid, but the councils talked a lot about, you know, what kind of restaurants they want in certain places, and should we be able to stop businesses that are making a lot of noise? So this is the kind of thing I feel like we we talk about fairly often up here, and we'll be talking about more. So the question is, is there some, to me, is there some sort of difference in what's involved here? Not that we would stop it from happening, but that we would, as we do with some other kinds of businesses, look at circumscribing it in certain ways. Whether the particular distance is the way to go, I just haven't made up my mind yet, and I'm still listening to what people are saying tonight. But that's my opening perspective on this. So I'm going to, one other thing I just want to say, I think the reason it's important to get it right is that, I don't want to end up with a, if one if one of these dispensaries even ends up in in Tacoma Park, have it end up being a situation where, for whatever set of reasons, in the neighborhood or the neighbors who are there don't like it, and then we sort of set back what Councilmember Smith was talking about, which seems to be we're moving in a direction of of more liberality here. So I agree that in a in a sort of pilot phase, being a little more cautious to avoid that kind of backlash actually makes some sense.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to understand the various aspects of this issue that we're talking about tonight. I know we're talking about sales of medical marijuana, not about having a farm in Tacoma Park. And we're talking about medicinal use, not recreational use, so it's unlike liquor, alcoholic And the sales would be to individuals who have a prescription. They would be sold by people who are who are licensed and that license is monitored by the state. I know that Councilmember Mail raised the concern about the federal enforcement as a reason for having a buffer zone. But beyond that, I'm not sure what the problem is that we're trying to solve. We, Mr. Kovar suggested that, as we've heard from some of the residents at Tacoma Park, are concerned about economic development, but that seems to be separate and aside from distance from school. So I'm not sure what it is that we're trying to solve. I, you know, I don't think it's fear of transmission of an illness by having people coming to get a medical product from, you know, being near schools. Is it the crowds of people that would be around? Or is it just plain public fear of the fact that we've lived for so many years with being told that that marijuana is horrible, and people that use it are horrible, and now we're going to be seeing it sold in the community? And they're afraid that somehow that's going to affect the kids. So at this point, I haven't I haven't figured out what the problem is that we're trying to solve. I don't see that a buffer around the schools has been, that anybody said what it is that that's going to prevent or or help. So at this point, I'm still open ears, but I'm unsupportive of a ZTA.
Councilmember Grishy?
Thank you, Mayor. So we talk about the war on drugs and the US attorneys. I'm an assistant US attorney, so I have to be a little bit guarded after talking to our general counsel's office about what I can share. But my my approach to this is, I look at this just from a zoning angle. And I say this respectfully to everybody in the room who's made this point. I'm, as a parent of two young kids, I'm not worried about a marijuana dispensary being close to someplace they may frequent, because marijuana is not something that I personally perceive as being some real threat to children in our community. So the stigma argument or stigmatization argument, I sort of disagree with. Also, the issue about these facilities facing a real risk of federal prosecution, I that's not also another reason why I would potentially support this amendment. And also that, you know, anybody up here, at least as I understand it, is anti-medical marijuana. It's the law of the law of this state, and I'm not going to opine on the on the wisdom of that particular law. To me, frankly, it's about, I think this zoning text amendment, at least as it's currently drafted, as we talk about, which we haven't talked about yet, the Tacoma Park East Silver Spring overlay zone. And former Councilmember Grimes makes a very good point. Why does this not cover every school in the city? So that's why this this school distance argument doesn't resonate with me. But what does resonate with me is, to be completely honest, I do not want a medical marijuana dispensary on Main Street in Tacoma Park. I believe it's 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 the law of the land, it's something that is appropriate within city limits, if the city so chooses, and that's how things shake out. When I ran for my campaign, it was about creating a Main Street that's for all residents. And the reason I asked Ms. Grigsby the question that I did was to understand what this population's going to be. It may be a very large population, but based upon things that I've read about medical marijuana states, we're not talking about the entire state population, we're not going to be talking about all of Tacoma Park. And I also, the CVS argument or the drugstore argument, I just don't frankly buy it, because as the city manager has suggested, CVSs and Walgreens are places that if I'm walking down Main Street, I might stop in, even though I don't have a medical marijuana prescription, to pick up some milk, to, you know, pick up some chocolate, which I love. I just think we have to be smart, and when we look at this Tacoma Park overlay amendment, and you look at the purposes of the overlay zone, foster economic vitality and attractive community character in areas needing revitalization, promote and enhance pedestrian environment and improve circulation system to pedestrians and bicyclists, substantially conform with the master plan vision for specific existing commercial areas. That if we are talking about a walkable community, what makes Tacoma Park Tacoma Park? Is people come here, they park their cars, and they walk around, and they go from shop to shop. And in and in these types of businesses that we have in our community now encourage patronage. If on Main Street, if in Tacoma Junction, you have a business that at at the forefront is a business that's going to limit the number of people that walk through the door, and Mr. Borden, I got to say, your comments and your emails to us were very, very informative, and I really appreciate them. But one thing that you said really resonates with me, when you talked about your friend in LA, quote, "You don't see people walking in and out." That's not what I want on my Main Street. I want places that you see people walking in and out. So to me, it's not about discriminating or having this inherent fear of marijuana users, particularly those who are medical marijuana users. But frankly, even those recreational, because I think somebody, Councilmember Siemens talked about, you know, that marijuana smokers are bad people. If they're bad people, then I would say probably 75% of the people I graduated with high school with are bad people. Most of my friends are bad people who recreationally use marijuana. Let's talk, let's talk like it's like we're being real here. I think the key, the issue here is, and I think the way we approach this with Councilmember Hucker, is the last paragraph of this talks about 500 feet from the property line of any school. To me, it's never been about a school issue. It's really been, and Seth Grimes makes a great point, then we should, we should pass a zoning amendment that applies to every school in Tacoma Park. It's not about schools. It's about not on Main Street, because we talk about liquor, we talk about alcohol, we talk about doctor's offices. If this is a medical facility, then I ask my colleagues and members of the community, do we want doctor's offices on Main Street? Do we want liquor stores on Main Street? I think the answer would be no. We want our Main Street to be a transient, pedestrian-friendly place that welcomes people to our community, where you can go to a Mark's Kitchen, where you can go to a Republic, where you can go to that shop that has those cool gifts that I can't remember the name of. So that to me, so I perceive this right now as a means to an end, but I also understand what Councilmember Siemens and others are saying. Our reasoning doesn't sort of jive with what we're trying to do here. And I think that's the crux of it. I think we want a Main Street, but but not completely devoid of this in our city. But I think we want a Main Street that has businesses that encourage patronage, and I just don't think that this is one of them. So I that's sort of how I perceive this issue. So I say respectfully to folks who think that this is about stigmatization, that this is about the war on drugs. I really believe that's a non sequitur argument. We all agree that these are, right now, as it currently exists, this is for patients who have needs. They're not the people who are getting prosecuted on a daily basis on the war on drugs. I can assure you that. And, you know, and I appreciate Councilmember Jared Jared Smith's arguments and points about, maybe we are moving in a direction of legalization in this state, but I think- But I think other states are a perfect example that medical dispensaries in other states where legalization has happened don't automatically become retail dispensaries. It creates another process. So I don't think by creating an amendment that protects what our Main Street looks like necessarily impedes any future business that may want to be in parts of Tacoma Park on a retail side because we've legalized. So that's sort of where my thinking is. And I, you know, I would point as part of the record here as a final point. The reasoning about all of this that makes the most sense to me is an email that we received from Jeff Trunzo of the great Ward III, I should note. And Jeff says in his closing remark, he says, "Though not a component of ZTA, we also support a consideration of expanding zoning tax amendment or writing another bill to include language about prohibition of a dispensary with certain designated revitalization zones such as Maryland Main Street program." I think that's the crux of this. I think it's not about stigma. It's not about that. It's really about what do we want on our Main Street? And this is a way to me that we can accomplish that, but maybe we're not doing it the right way and we should think about that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I have a couple of questions first. And one of these is the federal drug-free school zones. Does that apply to, I know it's in reference to schools, but is it reference to preschool situations? Is that included in that?
I think, Ross, do you have an answer for that?
What I could find didn't look like it included preschools, but Councilmember Mayo, you indicated you thought it did.
I thought it did. I thought that the federal definition actually was public, private schools, preschools, K-12, and playgrounds.
Okay, well, that's, okay, that's as good as we're going to get right now. The other question I have is that if the Montgomery County's, the planning board has already decided that they've made a decision that they don't want to do anything regarding dispensaries, is that correct?
It's not correct. They voted, they voted recommendation rejection of the ZTA, so.
Ms. Rigsby, could you come to the podium and answer the question, please? It was in the packets, so the information is in our packets. Thank you.
The planning board did discuss the ZTA 1513, and they didn't support it and didn't see a reason to move it forward.
Well, what I'm just trying to get to is whether there's a possibility of a situation where, if this ZTA was approved, but the rest of the county didn't have any such thing, that we would be the only part of Montgomery County that would have buffer zones around schools, et cetera, and the rest of Montgomery County would not? I mean, is that theoretical?
The planning board actually discussed that with a slightly different perspective of if this is something needed to protect schoolchildren, why aren't we doing it countywide? And their reason that they're not doing it countywide, and what they were articulating in that conversation is because they don't, they view it as a medical prescription needed for ill people and they don't, they didn't consider it a danger to schoolchildren.
Good. Well, that's good, that answer. Well, then, I just ask those sort of, to make sure what I say, I know a little bit about what I'm trying to say here. And that is, is that in this conversation, questions have been raised about business risk because of the potential for federal enforcement action. And I guess if I have a concern, I, all businesses take risks regardless, whenever they choose a location. And I don't think it's our job as a city council to be worrying about protecting businesses from making mistakes on where they locate their business. You know, and even though I think the potential for federal action is probably pretty remote, I don't think that's something we ought to be worrying ourselves about. So I won't go any further on that. The other thing about Main Street locating, which Councilmember Kreshi is talking about, is that, you know, we're talking about Main Street in the abstract because I guess, I'm not sure what Main Street is in Tacoma Park. It's all in the eye of the beholder. Obviously, some parts of the city, we look at Laurel Avenue as our Main Street. Over in my ward, Holden Lane might be, or New Hampshire Avenue might be our Main Street. And the hypothetical question gets raised is, well, what kind of businesses do we want on our Main Street? Well, my impression is, is that a lot of the people who would be visiting medical dispensaries are probably disabled or certainly elderly people who are likely to have more chronic diseases than young people have and who would be more prone to be being candidates for medical marijuana. And I just, and I think those, the kind of location you want would be right where other people are, not an unisolated location. And yes, I do think we want doctors' offices, chiropractic offices on Main Street. I don't think it's for me to decide what constitutes a healthy Main Street. Fact is, is that I can think of no better location for a marijuana dispensary than, say, on the second floor of a two-story commercial building where it isn't going to be interfering with the possibility of a retail use, but yet it's very convenient for everybody who's, or people who are prone to be on foot, who have to take buses to get where they're going. And there's a lot of those folks in the city. So that doesn't make any sense to me either. And I guess when I looked at all this, I look at the diagram that staff has kindly put together for us that shows all the schools in the city with the 1,000-foot circles around it. It's interesting because what it does is it eliminates a good chunk of the crossroads commercial area, including Holden Lane. If you add in pre-K, thinking about like Centronea and the pre-kindergarten school and the church near where I live, virtually the entire crossroads area gets, becomes ineligible for a location according to this. And I would also worry that pre-Ks are not schools in the sense of being permanent locations. Sometimes they're in churches, sometimes they're in houses. And they tend to relocate and pop up. And so I think it'd be very difficult to enforce that rule if that was the, as if that was the situation when you get to pre-K situations. So it comes down to, to me, is that I'm not sure what are the risk exposures that we are concerned about. For what it's worth, I've had no comments, zero, in my ward about medical marijuana dispensaries. And I'm not saying I won't get some tomorrow because of this conversation tonight. Hopefully, we will because it'd be nice to know. So right now, I'm flying on my own. I don't have guidance from any of my residents. And so if anybody's out there, hello, let me know. I just don't see the risk that we're exposing kids to, children, because that's basically what we're talking about when we're talking school. And whether we have a 500-foot zone or 1,000-foot zone, I guess, I don't see how children are going to be threatened by a medical use that people who go to it are only going there by invitation. In other words, because they have a, the equivalent of a doctor's prescription that would allow them to go in and actually transact business there and then leave, just completely beyond me as to what our exposure is. And when, frankly, we've got all kinds of liquor stores and beer and wine stores all around our, not so much within Tacoma Park, but certainly all around it, that cause, that have a lot more exposure risk to kids than what we're talking about here. So, and we managed, we managed to keep our children from becoming alcoholics, at least until they're about 14 anyway. So, strike that from the record, please. But I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just, I don't understand what we're trying to get to. And I guess in that regard, I would align my comments with those of Councilmember Siemens in that regard. I don't see a need for this ZTA.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayo?
I just note in passing, because I think it's somewhat entertaining, that of course, Tacoma Park has a history of fighting CVSs successfully. There was a CVS plan to be constructed in Tacoma Junction that is not built in the junction, and that's how we got the city parking lot that we're talking about redeveloping. Who knows?
I know.
I'm sorry, or not, that I missed that one. It's a comment on Mr. Lonza's comment. It would be if we had, and I wish we had zoning authority or some form of zoning authority that goes beyond what we have today, but maybe is not taking over from the county. That's a longer conversation. But if we had that, we would have the luxury of time. We would have the luxury of putting together what Councilmember Kreshi was speaking about and trying to get this just right, trying to design something that really worked for us, that really focused on the kind of uses or revitalization that we wanted in different parts of the city. And frankly, we'd be able to do that for lots of other reasons as well. But we're constrained here. We don't have that. We have a county, sort of a state and a county system that by and large are taking a let's just wait and see approach. We have a proposal from one county council member that's probably the only proposal we're going to get. And so we're looking at, and a proposal that for the people who have concerns about this, this, the opportunity for, let's assume just one dispensary to be located during this pilot phase in Tacoma Park, a legislative proposal for zoning that would seem to have made a number of those people happy. So for example, the, again, the letter that Councilmember Kreshi spoke of was a letter supporting the ZTA. So given that we have that, given that we are stuck with the hand that we have been dealt by County Councilmember Hucker, and that it seems to be something that matters to people, that's partly the basis on which I would move forward. Because it's not, it's not an issue where there's an incredibly compelling, you know, need either way. It's not critical one way or another to city revenue. If a dispensary is located in, I mean, I've never heard people complain that they can't get to the movie theater in Silver Spring, or they can't make it to the pharmacy, the Rite Aid, or the CVS in Tacoma Park. We're not talking about making dispensaries, putting dispensaries only in Annapolis. You know, it's not, I don't, I just don't see that this proposal acted upon makes the service, assuming the state commission decides to put one anywhere in the Tacoma Park Silver Spring area, that it makes the service that much less convenient. Or frankly, in round two, which is presumably going to be more dispensaries, that it would have a significant effect either. The reasons that, and I'm not speaking to these as definitive answers, but the reasons that I see for taking this action are a diverse set of things that I think, again, that the ZTA satisfies. One is fear of the unknown or lack of information about what's going to happen, that people are concerned about dispensaries located in close proximity to residential areas, places where they live, right next to their homes. And so people have some concern associated with that. What would this mean for me and my neighborhood on my walking routes? And again, I'm not saying it would, I don't have, I don't know what it will mean, but people have fears associated with that. The issue of the cash business is certainly something that has come up in other jurisdictions that because federal law, others know better, has various prohibitions around money involved in transactions for federally controlled substances. The way I understand it is banks don't allow credit cards, some major credit cards, you can't use credit card to buy your prescription drug. You may be able to use debit cards from some banks, but in general, it's a cash business. So does that create a risk of crime? So some people have fears associated with, will this change the crime profile of my neighborhood or this area? The presence of armed guards, so, you know, that's not a requirement under, there are lots of requirements around security of the sites in state law, safes and separate rooms that have locking doors and security systems, extensive security system requirements. But if a site had an armed guard, people have raised, like, what does that mean? That all of a sudden there's someone with a gun standing on my street corner or standing outside this business that didn't used to have that? I think the question, and maybe the most sort of compelling or explicit connection I heard to school zones and why people support school zones is the idea that within 1,000 feet of school is where you have many schoolchildren walking. So it's, those are the, those are the places where schoolchildren are going by storefronts or going by businesses or looking at whether anyone's going in or going out. And it seems to me that it's a mix of people, on the one part, fear associated with that, the crime, the armed guard issues that I mentioned before, and having children in close proximity to those things. And it's also some fear about, and I think it's not, well, I just won't, I won't speak of my personal views on it at this point, fear associated with showing kids that this controlled substance is now less controlled, a controlled substance that is tied to significant addiction problems in youth. And that somehow that creates a path toward or some opportunity for people to use drugs. So that's another reason that I've seen come in and the feedback that I've gotten. So those mix of things suggest to me that an action like this could allow us to go forward, could create, allow significant space in the community still for dispensaries to be located if the state commission chooses to locate them. And of course, the county is by no means the decider here. This whole question could be completely irrelevant. We don't know and we can't know. But that this action would satisfy a large part of the community who's concerned about this and still allow a dispensary to move forward. So to me, it seems like a win-win is a way to move forward with a pilot program. And the one other question I had for city staff or the city manager is, I'm a little bit confused. My understanding was that the way that County Councilmember Hucker had drafted this is that it would apply to Tacoma Park schools, and I don't understand that it doesn't apply, does apply to some schools, not other schools. As far as I know, it was applying to schools. So, you know, Tacoma Park Elementary, Pony Branch Elementary, the Adventist School, the Middle School, the ones that are shown on this map, right? There's no schools that are, other than pre-K, which is a separate issue, there is no school other than pre-K that is not shown on this map. So they would, it would apply to all schools other than pre-Ks?
I think the confusion was the impact. So not all schools are within 1,000 feet of commercially zoned areas. So the 1,000-foot buffer might not make any difference. And the planning board certainly had that conversation with the 500-foot buffer because they said it didn't have any impact. There weren't any properties that fit the commercial zoning required to have a dispensary that were within the 500 feet.
May I ask a follow-up question? On these schools, is it just public schools? Is it also private schools? And I know that we had previously talked about a Montessori school. I don't see that listed on here.
The map that staff did is public and private schools. So the Don Bosco School and the John Evans Andrews School are both on there. The Montessori school is pre-K aged, and so it's not on there. We were looking at K-12 schools.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had one.
If I can, though, I think one of the questions had to do with that the neighborhood retail zone along Maple Avenue may not be included in this, and that's closer to Pony Branch Elementary School. So I think there was, that was one area where I heard some differences within different email conversations.
Just one follow-up question. Given the county's plan- Given the county's planning staff's efforts to eliminate, to vastly simplify the zoning code, are they generally taking positions trying to not do ZTAs to sort of maintain that effort of simplifying zoning that they, I think that was two years ago, or whenever we've done it, or not?
Their goal in the zoning rewrite was to clarify and systematize, not necessarily to simplify. I know that they hope that there isn't a huge rush of ZTAs, and doing the kinds of efforts they had to sort of uniformly look at it as a whole. That being said, this is ZTA 1513. So, they're clearly looking at them, and...
Fifty, so fifteen being the year, thirteen being the number of ZTA proposals so far this year?
Yeah. For 15, it will, I don't know if, I imagine that if Tom Hucker reintroduces it, he will introduce it as 1513, 2015, with amendments if needed. But they are also starting to number for 2016.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thanks. I think this came up in some conversations that preceded this tonight, but earlier tonight, just channeling some of the things I'm hearing, don't have it near, near Main Street, make sure that there can be adequate security, don't have it too close to schools, make sure there's adequate parking, it's accessible to public transportation, and maybe even have some healthcare-oriented connections. So, we kind of have this hospital that's going to be free in a little while. So, what about trying to locate it there?
Before I go to you, Councilmember Koreshi, I'm going to jump in since you guys are repeating yourselves. Are you going, not repeating, but you're going for a second round? There are three reasons I would support a position similar to where Councilmember Mail was going, in a thousand-foot buffer zone for schools. Let's take them, the first is, I disagree with the planning board findings that, that a medical marijuana dispensary is the same as a pharmacy. In my mind, it is not the same as a CVS or a Walgreens. The way the state legislation is written, as Councilmember Mail just talked about, the requirements, the security requirements are nowhere near what are required of a pharmacy. Specifying the size of safes, specifying the width of the walls, and that there needs to be a division between a public area, the public area, and when people are allowed to go back and forth. In my mind, for, for those reasons, as well as the ones we talked about before, about who goes into a Walgreens or a CVS to shop for other things other than medication. The second reason is, is one of safety, and where there are schoolchildren. The buffer zone is not just about where they're going to school, but where schoolchildren are walking. Tacoma Junction, in, in the mornings and in the afternoons, so many of our children in our community go through the junction. It is one of the largest bus stops for Blair, is right there. We also live in a community where, as I know, I'm living on the corner of Elm and Sycamore, we have unfortunately been the victims of different crime sprees by the Rittenhouse crime, a gang in DC. These, these are realities of where we live. And so, if we're talking about putting something in a location where we have a lot of children walking through, needing these security issues, I think we do, under this idea that this is a pilot, our state is figuring out how to do this, I think the first priority should be safety. And we should see how it goes, and then from there, we can expand. The third reason is, as we've heard back in October, and in talking to folks in DC and looking at their process, their process was one of a much more back and forth in thinking about where the dispensaries should be located. And so, for, for that reason, I would like us to move forward, move this back to the county council, so they can have these conversations and these discussions, rather than just sort of this blanket, they, the dispensaries get to be placed where other type of pharmacies. So, I just want to jump in there. I think it's Councilmember Koreshi, and then I'll go back to Councilmember Siemens.
Just one thing I forgot to mention, and I think the city manager and I had a conversation about this earlier, and Councilmember Grimes even raised this issue about the possibility of this not being something that could pass at the county level, for whatever reason. The language that I pointed out in the, the end of this ZTA, which talks about the distance as being the basis, or the policy behind the zoning amendment from schools, I just was wondering if somebody in the city staff could look into what other zoning options we have available to us outside of this idea of schools, whether it be, you know, commercial districts. I, I just don't understand what the zoning authority is, as it pertains to this particular issue, cannabis dispensaries. So, similar to what we talked about earlier, if there's something that, even if there's some literature on that, or some write-up on that, that'd be just helpful to understand what our parameters are in that area.
I guess, we spoke briefly, I, one of the things I think is just the purpose of the commercial revitalization overlay zones, and part of the reason that they were started was to allow for site plan review, and a more close, closer look at streetscaping and, and aesthetics, and kind of neighborhood uses. We've not, I mean, planning staff may have looked at some of this, but I've, I've not had a discussion, but it may be something that we could look at what, if there's a different kind of thing that looks at first-level retail, that kind of thing. And I've just not, I've not spent that time doing that.
Okay.
I would just add quickly that Baltimore County did do something that may get towards what you're thinking of, and that is, they did a special, they allowed dispensaries by special exception, which means they have to, they have a hearing and get a variance in commercial revitalization districts. I think that was oriented toward Main Street-type designated areas, Maryland Main Street designation. So, there, the cross, the Tacoma Park East-Silver Spring Commercial Overlay Revitalization Zone, of course, covers the whole city. And so, it may be viewed problematically by county council if Tacoma Park says, "Anywhere but here," which would kind of be the message if we draw the city boundaries and say, "Not in the city." But there may be a more nuanced approach that we can take. Tacoma Park also has the only Maryland Main Street designation in Montgomery County. So, that's also a funny wrinkle about it.
Thank you.
While you're at the podium, thank you, Mayor. Was looking at the, the map that shows the thousand-foot buffer zones around all the schools, and yet I'm puzzled by Mayor Stewart's saying that, you know, one of the goals is to protect the Tacoma Junction area, yet I see on this map that, you know, the only commercial zone that's really within a thousand-foot buffer is really a, a big chunk of the crossroads area, and just the Pine Avenue area of the old Tacoma. The Tacoma Junction area is not within a thousand-yard buffer. So, if the problem is, we don't want it in, in Tacoma Junction, the thousand-foot buffer doesn't address the problem on the table.
Again, the map is for K through 12 schools. So, if, we would need to do some looking around to see if we could track all the daycares and preschools and...
So, we have a misleading document here, saying that this is what the buffers would affect, when it's actually going to be more than this?
It's, the, the schools in the legend are K through 12, public and private schools.
Right. But what we're saying is that we would include things other than this, so that the buffers would be different than what we have on our map.
I think if council wanted to include other things, then you'd probably want to spell that out specifically in the ZTA. So, if you want it to be daycare and preschool, if you want it to be parks, if you want it to be bus stops, you would need to actually articulate that.
Okay. I just like to make sure that my colleagues know that we're not just voting on this, that it may be something different than this.
Right. That is only the K through 12 schools.
Thank you.
All right. So, to move us forward, why don't we first just do a straw vote on, to see where we are?
I'm sorry, could we just get, there's one thing that Ms. Grigsby said that I didn't quite understand. On the Main Street designation, you said that encompassed much of the city, or did I mishear what you said?
The, the Maryland Main Street designation is to what we think of as the old Tacoma area, from the DC boundary line up Laurel and Carroll to the junction. But the Tacoma Park East-Silver Spring Commercial Revitalization Overlay Zone, which Councilmember Koreshi was talking about earlier, is the, the whole city.
So, would it be possible to...
Sorry, may I be recognized for point of fact?
Sure.
The, the commercial revitalization overlay zone was actually modified by the county council during the zoning rewrite of last year's. It used to include areas of Tacoma Langley Crossroads, and no longer does. Now, the areas that are in the commercial revitalization overlay zone include three of the four sides of the intersect, corners of the intersection of 410 in New Hampshire. I believe further down New Hampshire, but I'm not sure. It includes all of old Tacoma, but it doesn't include, for instance, Maple Avenue. The city manager alluded to, it's actually now called a community-supported retail. This is part of a, an overlay zone that is not the same as the commercial revitalization overlay zone. And the email that I forwarded to you from both Jeff Science, no, that's wrong, from Pam Dunn of the planning board, I'm sorry, the planning staff, and Efsan Motazidi from, who works for Tom, for Ike Leggett, confirmed that the dispensaries would be allowed here, and they would not be affected by this ZTA. Is this clear?
Yeah, that, it's clear to me. Other people? Yeah.
And, and when he's saying here, he's pointing to the Maple Avenue market.
I'm, yes, I'm, well, it's not only the corner of Sherman and Maple, there are also, as you know, retail establishments within some of the apartment buildings. So, it could be in an apartment building, too, and those would be allowed.
Yeah.
But would it be possible to do something that's just related to the Main Street designation?
Well, I, if we could just, because it's kind of getting late, just, I would like just get a sense of who would like to move forward in even discussing the, as a council, as a body, making some recommendation to the county council, versus who feels like they, they don't want to move forward, leave things as they are, and don't want to weigh in on the county council. And then, if we have enough to say we're going to move forward, we can have the conversation about what does that look like? Does that make sense to folks?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, a hand vote. Who favors moving forward with some resolution to the county council regarding the location of medical marijuana dispensaries? One, two, three, four. Those opposed to moving forward? Three. Okay. So, we will move forward. Why don't we spend some time, a few moments, there've also been a couple of proposals put on the table, what other people would like to see the staff prepare or look into in terms of next steps. Councilmember Kovar, now, do you want to explore something?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering, it doesn't sound as if the, the feat from schools seems to really get at what several of the people here are concerned about. So, the question is, is there some other way to structure a modification to the zoning requirements that might get at what people want, other than doing that? I don't think I have enough information to be able to say that. That, I think, is worth exploring, if it can be done. If it can't, then it could turn out that there's nothing we can do. But I'd like to at least know that answer.
Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
I would agree with Councilmember Kovar. I think it was clear even from what Ms. Gris, Grigsby told us, that the planning board was specific that the distance from the school was not going to sell the, the ZTA to them. So, I think we need something different, and so, I agree with Mr. Kovar.
Councilmember Mail?
I mean, the planning board aside, ultimately, it's the county council that we're looking to influence with weighing in one way versus another. So, you know, I, I feel like we don't have, that's informative, but it doesn't, shouldn't change our decision to weigh in. As I've said, I support weighing in and support of the ZTA, amended ZTA for a thousand feet that County Councilmember Hucker has proposed, but I see no problem with adding to that letter, or sending a second letter, a resolution, I should say, that makes some general recommendations to the county council around, thinking about where, essentially what we're saying is where businesses that really don't need a storefront, and don't benefit from the advertising that a storefront normally provides, could be located in this, in this pilot. And what I don't know, similar to Councilmember Kovar, is whether, is the authority within the existing zoning code for the county to get that specific about first story, second story, you know, storefront retail on a Main Street versus not, how those things are even defined.
Councilmember Koreshi?
I think it's interesting, you know, I think we're reaching the same conclusion, but maybe our reasonings for getting there are somewhat different. As Councilmember Mail has just pointed out his concerns, I think it would be interesting to see, based on what I've asked the city manager to look into, about how, you know, we can look at alternative forms of zoning amendments that stay out of, for example, when you look at the OTBA's commercial zone, and, you know, what a map would potentially look like if you incorporate the concerns that some folks have in as the ZTA is currently drafted, which is the pink areas on this map, which are schools that we've identified, and adding that particular area, and what that would leave, you know what I mean? And then also, to Councilmember Schultz's comment, and I think, I think he gets to, although we may not agree about moving forward or not, he gets to a very important point, which is, you know, I think he said that he really could see a marijuana dispensary on the second floor of a storefront. And I think that's what I, where I'm getting at personally. It's, how do we, how do we control that? Can we control that? Because again, my, my concern is storefronts, the Main Street district, or the OTBA commercial zone, and sort of the revitalization areas that we've identified for economic revitalization. So, thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I mean, having somewhat of a zoning background, I mean, if you wanted to be able to do that, what, what Councilmember Koreshi's talking about, we would have to, I think, persuade the, the planning board and the council to allow these dispensaries to become designated as special exceptions. And that you would say that, if it's on the second level, I mean, it could be hypothetically, that it's, would not have to be a special exception, but if it was on a re, on a street level, then it would be and require a public hearing, and all of that, which would serve as an incentive to proprietors to look at second-floor locations in Montgomery County. But trying to, to go that way is a, a special exception is something that modifies the, the zoning ordinance for the entire county, and not just Tacoma Park. And you got yourself into a big, a big project, and I'm not sure whether we would want to do that, but that's, that's one way.
So, what I'm hearing from council is an interest to move forward, but needing more information on what are possible, as for us to give guidance to the county council and the planning board on what we'd like to see, that it sounds like, from at least the four members who voted for moving forward on this, we'd like to see, have more input and control on, and guidelines on where medical marijuana dispensaries can be located.
With the kinds of ideas that have been suggested, some of the questions, I think we would not be ready for next week.
No, I know.
Okay. So, several weeks would be useful.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I'm not sure the second-floor thing is very viable, because unless you had an elevator, it wouldn't work, because we're talking about, you know, the high likelihood of disabled people, yeah, so.
Okay. All right. Since Ms. Palma is already at the seat, why don't we just plow forward and move on to the ordinance establishing a vacant and abandoned property registry?
Sure. Moving on. The council had been previously discussing various methods for dealing with vacant properties, discouraging vacancies, and making sure that vacant properties were properly secured and maintained. So, I've tried to draft that into an ordinance. I sort of separated... I sort of separated it into two categories. The first would be distressed properties. That would be either pre-foreclosure or pre-tax lien sale, or that's something that's been foreclosed on and the lender took the title back. The lender would be required to, before, at or before the time they filed the notice of default or a foreclosure action, to inspect the property, find out whether it's vacant, keep inspecting it on a monthly basis, and if it is found to be vacant within 30 days to register it as a vacant property, pay the proper fee, and be subject to various maintenance and security requirements, boarding up if necessary, whatever's appropriate, which is set forth in the ordinance. Other vacant property in the city would be required to be registered by the owner or the owner's agent if they've contracted with some company or realty company, which should also be required to be registered within 30 days and maintained and secured, and proof of insurance provided, along with the registration requirement. Certain properties, just because somebody's not living there for a month, doesn't make it a vacant property. If it remains furnished, has utilities and service, and is maintained when the owner's not there, then that wouldn't be considered vacant. Similarly, certain properties under renovation, so long as there's a building permit and there's active construction going on, wouldn't be considered vacant. Welcome to answer any questions or go through it paragraph by paragraph, if you'd like me to do that.
That's, okay, I just, you can open it up for comments and questions. I just had one small thing. On line 42, where it says create, and it's supposed to be unattractive, correct? Not attractive?
An attractive nuisance is a, is a special form. It attracts nuisances.
Got it.
And it's really weird.
It is really weird. Now that you say that, I get it. Thank you.
I don't actually see the line. Maybe I've got it different.
It's all right. It doesn't matter.
Okay.
All right. Does anybody have any comments, questions? I think there was one question that was emailed. Did we cover that?
I just covered it. It's the council email. It was my understanding that some of the council members were interested in also providing that properties actively for sale or for rent would not be considered vacant, at least for some period of time. And I had proposed sample language, which I can read if you want me to.
I have not been able to check my email since five o'clock, so if you could, I'd appreciate.
It was going to add to what will be a very long definition of vacant property. I might separate it out for the next reading. At the end of the definition of vacant property in 6.38.030 would be added, "A building that the owner or owner's agent is actively trying to sell or rent, brand as evidenced by a listing agreement with realty contact information, MRIS, that's Metropolitan," okay, you know, "or MLS Electronic Listing or Other Advertisement of Sale or Rent, closed paren, shall not be considered a vacant property, provided the time period for sale or rent shall not exceed," and that's where we'll need council input, six months, one year, four months, from the initial listing advertisement, offer or advertisement of sale or rent. "The exemption from the vacant property registration requirement for a building for sale or rent may be extended for one additional period upon a showing that the building is still actively for sale or rent and provided that the building is in compliance with the vacant property maintenance requirements of this chapter." That's a proposed addition. And what I had not determined, because it's not my decision to make, is how long you want to give for the sale or rental of the property.
Okay. Councilmember Mail?
So, as I understood the text as written right now, without your language, when I read the definition of vacant property and the, starting on line 147, the owner registration of vacant property, the way I read that, it would apply to people who had homes for sale, who'd moved out, they'd moved to California, and they threw their home on the market, that it would cover that. And I just wanted to state clearly that as a policy goal, I don't want us to create a registration process for those kinds of houses. They don't create a problem in the community. Registering them will just create a workload burden for the city that doesn't solve the problem, it doesn't address a problem that we face. So it sounds like we have a version of language that would cover that. And I guess I favor something like six months. A year seems like a long time, especially given that what you proposed, you could, what's proposed here, you can ask for a six-month extension, so a year, a six months becomes a year. The only consequence of going past a year is you have to pay $200. And I guess I'm not averse to the idea that someone who's had their home on the market for a year and hasn't sold it, that it's not a bad thing to try to incentivize them selling it. And so $200 seems like a pretty small, pretty small incentive to try to make them consider the price or whatever their process is. But, but in general, just the overall principle is focusing on distressed homes and not on vacant houses that are going to be on the real, either are or going to be on the real estate market.
Councilmember Smith?
Ms. Perlmutter, thank you for putting this together. One thing that MML is working with the state to come up with a template to deal with vacant properties, and it should be ready by February, so hopefully it will make the process a little easier for municipalities, because this is a big issue for towns and cities throughout the state. My question has to do with the time periods that you propose. Where did you get this? Are those arbitrary?
Thirty days or this?
Six months, one year, three months.
Four months was my understanding, was what some council members had proposed. Six months was my idea, one year is DC.
Okay. Why can't you just go to real estate agents that have access to these databases and find out time on the market for these properties, and then we can use that?
We could. It might change from time to time. When the market's hot, how the market's not.
Yes, I mean, that's, I have no problem coming back to the resolutions that we passed and make changes, but then it's not just an arbitrary date. I mean, it's a date that's based on what's going on in the marketplace.
Oh. I guess it's hard to, we could, it would take some research, but it can be done. Whether you want the whole 20912 zip code or some other, I mean, probably like all of us, you get mailers, well, you are a Realtor, from Realtors about what properties have sold and how many days they've been on the market.
Right. I mean, they could run some comps and find out what this market, how long properties have been sitting out there. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I have some concerns. Parts of this leave me quite confused. The definition of a distressed property means a property that is under one notice of default or delinquent on the mortgage. How do we know, how does anybody know, that a property owner has received a notice of default or delinquent on the mortgage? Because as a commercial lender, I know that a lot of loans are in a chronic state of default, or let's put it this way, a chronic state of delinquency, because the property owner's behind on their mortgage. And you're just, you know, it's just because it's a delinquent loan, but that's a private matter between the owner, between the...
Unless it's vacant, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, but even if it is vacant, even if it's vacant, how would we know that?
We might not know at that time. We generally get notice after the complaint for foreclosure is docketed.
Well, I mean, I think that we need to be able to write a thing here that...
This one I took from a model ordinance.
Can you tell us which line?
I'm talking about on page two of the definition of distressed property. And the point is, is that we need to be able to write an ordinance that allows us to react to public notices, not, I mean, this is just one issue, the relationship between a lender and the borrower is otherwise, I mean, a loan can go into a default for lots of different reasons, but that's not something that otherwise gets published, fact that tends to be rather private information. So, I'm not saying what you've written, Linda, is incorrect or doesn't make sense. It comes from a model ordinance. It may be more me that's, that doesn't understand what we're trying to do here, but I'll leave that.
You probably wouldn't know, several of those pending foreclosure, but a lot of properties are in that situation. They're not actually, there's no foreclosure action filed, they don't, the lender doesn't actually take action, but they're clearly in default. And so far as the public knows, the bank took over the property.
Well, insofar as we can identify by public record that the property is in default, whether it's in foreclosure or not, that's, that makes some sense to me. But I want to move on if I can.
There are some ways to...
Okay. There may be.
They're not foolproof, because as you said, a property can be in default, and then the default is cured, and a year later, it's in default again. Usually you can tell because they've filed a notice of substitution of trustee in the land records.
Okay. Right. That might be something. But then somebody has to pay attention to those substitution of trustees things, which are pretty garden variety actions. Okay, let me just, on the next page, on page three, under vacant property, it's defined, as you just described orally, a building or structure, it's a second sentence in line 94, that remains furnished, has utilities connected or in use, and on property that is maintained while the owner is absent, shall not be considered vacant. Well, that doesn't make any sense. I have a house that's been vacant across the street for perhaps 10 years. The utilities are on. The house, as far as anybody knows, has got furniture in it. There's no way actually to know, because you'd have to kind of snoop around the house and look in the windows, climb through the poison ivy and the weeds. And the owner collects, comes through there by once in a while and picks up his mail. I know the owner, I know the couple that own it, Wayne Fowler and his wife. They moved out of that house a long time ago, but by this definition, it's not a vacant house. And I want to be able, make sure that we have definitions here that we're talking about not just vacant properties, but vacant and properties that are, at the same time, distressed. Because vacant properties buy and own themselves, sometimes people, because they are well-maintained, we're not even aware that their house is necessarily vacant.
Exactly.
Because the property owner does keep it.
I just need a point of clarification from Ms. Perlmutter. I think these are just the definition parts, and so then when we move to, my understanding correct, the other sections where we're talking about the registry and everything, then we are combining the terms, like vacant and blighted, right?
You're certainly combining the distressed and vacant.
But I just make, I want to think about Councilmember Schultz's point, that there's having a definition of vacant property separate from the...
Distressed.
Distress, thank you.
Yeah, you can have this certainly separate from the distress, but as far as the, for instance, the owner's obligation or their agent's obligation to register the property, it's only if they're vacant. And Councilmember Schultz is correct, if it's still got, you know, electricity, it's got furniture, it's being maintained, we're not considering it vacant, and so the owner wouldn't be required to register it.
Yeah, and that's, that's, that wouldn't, that wouldn't get to the problem that I have.
But if it's still distressed property, then it would be required to be registered.
The problem is, is that the property owner owns it, it may not even be in default, because he may have paid cash for the property, let's say, or the mortgage has been fully paid off. So he owns it outright, it's not a, so you're not going to have any action by a lender or substitution of trustee. He's just a person who owns the property and has effectively abandoned it, and it becomes an effect to the neighborhood, a source of weeds, basically.
Maybe you want to make the time period longer. If you want to take that out, you should probably make the time period longer than 30 days, because technically, somebody goes on a two-month vacation.
Well, I don't want to make it too short, because what I'm mostly concerned with, the problem that I've seen throughout the city are houses that have been vacant for four, five to 10 years.
I said longer, not shorter.
Yeah. And the ones that sit on, that are vacant for up to a year, I don't, I don't see that as a serious problem. It may, it may be because the house has been previously neglected in any case, but then you have the code enforcement provisions to go after the owner in any case. But I, I, so, I mean, I, I just have questions about making this ordinance address the issues that I see are the real, are the serious problems, the one that just seem to, by their existence, they burn holes in our neighborhoods.
So, Councilmember Schultz, if I can ask, so you're talking about long-term vacant properties, not necessarily distressed?
Vacant and distressed.
Okay.
Now, I mean, let me clarify. Distressed, I think what Linda's talking about here is a legal definition of distressed that means that the property, from a lender's point of view, is in distress, because it's not, it's in default. The loan is, the mortgage is not being paid. Your, my idea of distressed is that the place is falling down, it's out of, out of conformance, and that's a different definition of distressed.
So blighted?
Blighted, let's say that. So what I'm worried about are the blighted properties. Thank you, Tim, came up with the right word. And, and they may or may not be vacant, but if they are vacant and blighted, then we need to be, I'd like, I'd like this ordinance to sharpen its focus on those above, first and foremost.
And can I just ask a question?
It would be a whole.
Or not, Fred?
Yeah.
So you're concerned with the vacant property, because I think there's properties within my ward that fall into the quagmire you're sort of pointing out. But when I look at page six, the vacant property maintenance, one of the first things that you can do under line 214 is the exterior of the property shall be kept free of weeds, and that includes vacant property. So wouldn't that resolve your issue?
Of what?
I think you can use weeds as an example. That's what I'm just trying to get at.
Yeah, except that sometimes weeds aren't sufficient, from a blight point of view, to kind of engender much action on the part of our code enforcement people, and then when they do, they give a notice, and the owner goes out and gets somebody to come over and mow the lawn, chop down all the vines and stuff like that. The notice gets abated, but the problem just continues.
Well, maybe, I think Councilmember Kreschik might have pointed out, so if we go to, start at line 210, and you look at, and we can come back to this at another time, but Councilmember Schultz, if you look at that section there, section 6.38.100, wouldn't the, wouldn't this section cover all the things that are talked about here, the weeds, the free of graffiti tagging?
They're pretty stringent exterior standards.
So, I think that would cover the situations you're talking about, and maybe there's things you can, we can add here.
Yeah. Yeah, that, this covers the stuff that I'm concerned about, but by definition, it omits properties that are not blighted and vacant, and those are the ones that we're not so concerned about. We may still want them to have them on a registry, just so we can track them for other reasons, but the, to me, one of the powers of this registry is that it acts as some sort of an inducement to get people to get off their rear ends and do something about, about the blight. In fact, what I would like to do... In fact, what I would like to do is that, you know, is that we can continue to up the fines over a period of time when these properties persist over years and years and years. I mean, maybe we cannot, maybe that gets beyond our municipal infraction capabilities. It just drives me crazy when we have these kind of situations.
Right, I mean, I think that the reason that this came forward is that there was a request by Council for a vacant and abandoned property registry, and there do need to be some criteria that get you there. It's, sometimes I think it's really different if it's an occupied or mostly occupied building that has a series of code enforcement problems, what the, what would be the trigger that would get on a registry and get something fixed? So, not sure if Ms. Pearlman has an answer for a good answer, a good, you know, proposal for that, but that's, I think we tried to do the best we could with the kinds of triggers that are normally used in these kinds of registries.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, as far as the occupied properties, that would just be unsafe buildings, part of the code, or the normal property maintenance code enforcement process. Did you want, this is for Councilmember Schultz, did you want to just eliminate that sentence? In which case, basically, anything that's not occupied for more than 30 days, that is not under active construction or undergoing renovation, and the new addition is not a property for sale or rent.
Yeah, I mean, I think that those could go on the registration list, those that are vacant for, say, more than a year, that are not actively for sale or under construction. You know, that would help you get around bothering with properties that are in probate. Because in Maryland, I'm told that you can't get through probate in less than six months, even if you touch all the bases right on time, and so if a...
There's actually a related problem, that a lot of properties never go through probate. Somebody just dies, and the family stays there, or becomes abandoned.
Yeah, sorry.
But one possibility, this is a question, not a proposal yet, is that a building or structure that remains furnished, has utilities connected, so forth, shall not be considered vacant unless the vacancy continues for more than, make it a longer time period, one year, six months, whatever you consider.
Yeah, something like that would work.
That might be a compromise.
I guess I'm a little bit concerned with trying to write this at the table.
Yeah.
Perhaps this is something that we can postpone for some time and, and work on some of the language. I know Councilmember Schultz, you'll be out of town, so I'd like to make sure that I fully understand what you're...
I'd be happy to.
If you give me the ideas, I can write them up.
Because it's sort of a concern, you know, an issue that, I've got four or five of these properties in Ward 6, and they've been that way for as long as I can recall.
Councilmember Kovar, Councilman May, would you like to...
Just a, just a quick thing, and maybe this follows up on what Fred was talking about. At the very end, on the last page, page nine of nine, where it talks about violations in enforcement, I guess the purpose of having a registry is that you're going to do something with it, it's not just to create a registry. And so, I guess the question is whether, should there be escalating enforcement steps that we could take, or other actions, and at a certain point, I mean, does someone just get to keep a vacant house for as long as they want, and just, you know, never make it better? Or how do we get to that? That strikes me as the fundamental issue here, because, yeah, there are occasional instances, and maybe someone fixes it up, and then it's fine, but if what Fred is talking about, and that can exist elsewhere, is not just in his area, what do we do to actually address sort of repetitive scoff laws, if we're even allowed to under municipal rules?
Well, it's not a situation, I mean, if they pay their taxes, it's not a situation where ownership, they forfeit ownership if it's vacant for some period of time.
Well, not if it's vacant, but if it's not properly maintained.
Hmm.
Because otherwise, you just get an endless series of fines, and maybe sometimes it gets fixed, and then you're right back there again. I think that's sort of what Fred was talking about.
I think we can add that to the list of things we can look into.
I don't have to answer it right now, but I think that's the piece of this I feel might be missing.
Okay, I'll think about it.
Councilmember May?
Yeah, so, I guess, just a little bit of background, I think, because it's helpful for new council members, or at least for me, it's helpful to rethink, think about where we started. We started with a process where we, for example, talked about the example of hoarders and homes that were occupied, but in a very, very poor condition. We talked about houses that had been foreclosed upon, houses that were simply empty and not being maintained. And I thought we moved toward, you know, let's, let's realize that we don't have one tool to solve all our problems, all the problems I just described, and others I probably skipped, that we should go somewhat cautiously to try to figure out if we can do something in particular that helps us get information about the scale of the problem, so that's where the registry came in, as being particularly helpful. And then something that gave us, you know, reasonable tools that we don't have today, associated with trying to get some improvement to properties. And so, the way I read what you've written for us, and thank you very much for doing so, and city staff for their role in putting this together, is that we've got sort of one angle for distressed homes, distressed being designed, defined based on mortgage and financing largely, and that creates a process whereby, I think it's the lender or responsible party is, of a distressed property is also looking at vacancy and the state of the vacant property, and that creates a path toward registry and a path toward requirements for maintenance. And then there's simply vacant properties, and we've talked about that, that are not financially distressed, or that's not an obvious part of it, but they're empty. And the signals that they're empty are some of the issues that Councilmember Schultz was describing. That also kicks them into a registry, and also creates maintenance requirements that if not followed, result in Class C violations. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, and then I'm getting to sort of the two question points, and both of those categories will also lead to you're on a list, and you pay $200 annually to get your house in that list, or property in that list, and to keep filing. And then, so that's, that seems to me, it's a pretty good approach in general, and I might have some tweaks here and there, but I think largely, that's, that's one of the things we were seeking to do. Class C is, what's a Class C violation?
Class C is $200 for the initial offense.
And what's the second offense?
$400.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question related to that?
I'm sorry, could I just, just one more point? And then it says, "And impose penalties against the owner's agent for the violation." What would that mean, in the very last sentence on 316, 317?
That basically means issue a citation, that means issue a fine or abatement order.
An abatement, okay, thank you.
Whatever. With respect to, I guess, Councilmember Kovar's point, as I recall, although I've never seen it enforced, French Georgia's County actually has something that says, if a property is abandoned and vacant for more than six months, it can be demolished. I've never seen them do it, but I believe it either is or was on the books.
Councilmember Smith?
And then the historic districts also have, and again, they've sent out notices, I don't think they've ever enforced it, demolition by neglect provisions. But maybe something along those lines I can look into.
Oh, a question, a quick question I wanted, is that there's a difference between a fee and a fine. And if we have a registration list, we're telling people that they, that they need to register, and there's a fee associated with that registration. Does that necessarily have to be classified as an infraction?
The registration fee, no.
Okay, because then we might be able to say that the second year, your membership fee, it goes up to $400 a year, so because you're, become, you want to become a member for the second year on this vacant property list. So we're not really having to worry about class, you know, G through A infractions. We are simply saying, this is a membership club that you belong to, and you, whether you like it or not, I'm characterizing it that way to make a point.
But if the fee and the fine are the same, what's the point?
Well, the amount. They still have to pay the fee, they might get fined for not paying it.
Right, but if somebody pays a fee to register, and then someone else doesn't, and it's the same price.
Yeah, it is the same price, but if you're infraction, then we have to abide by the municipal rules that, in our code, on infractions and all of that.
Sure, but keep in mind that your fee has to be reasonably related to the cost of the regulation. It can't be just a disguised tax.
Uh-huh.
I mean, I think it can be, I think it can be higher than $200, but it's got to be somehow reasonably related to the municipality's costs.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I just wanted to confirm my impression that this also applies to multifamily homes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And industrial. So, what I would, and we've raised some issues tonight, what I would ask in the next week or so, or next few days before some of us leave, if you could please send in comments, I know the city staff has worked very hard on this, and I, you know, as we get towards budget season, and our agenda gets packed with things like that, I think this is something that we wanted to address early on this year. So, if folks could please review this and turn in comments or other questions by maybe early next week, and then we can try and get this on the agenda again in a few weeks. All right, our final item is a discussion of amendment of the City Code, Chapter 16.16, 6.090 fees. The city manager, or who's?
I think we've, we're having an attorney.
Attorney. Thank you, Ms. Pearlman.
Good evening. Kenneth Segman here. The proposed ordinance, before you will revamp the code provisions regarding landlord-tenant fees, we've experienced problems with landlords charging abusive fees to, as a work around direct control. And, so what we've, what we're proposing to do here is limit the fees that landlords can charge to ones that are specified in the code, or more likely in regulations. We're going to try to move most of the fee provisions to regulations. One, one other issue we address here in the code change relates to extermination fees in multifamily properties, because it's, you can't pin responsibility for an infestation on one unit, because if you exterminate one unit, the creatures go through the walls to another unit. So really, the landlords have to enforce, you know, the requirements that tenants maintain their units to get rid of infestation problems, and not just put the fees on the tenants. So, are there, I mean, that's pretty much what we're doing. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, the, kind of the details of what the fees, what fees will be permitted, and how much they can be will be in the regulations.
If I can, I think, you know, these are points of contention that come up often, so having it clarified is important, and having it, and it's nice to just kind of lay it out in a straight format, both within the code, in the appropriate place, and in the regulations.
Councilmember Smith?
Mr. Segman, I appreciate this. When I was on COLTA, this was an issue. You know, landlords always try to figure out ways to get around or skirt the law, and charge tenants different types of fees. One thing, a question I have for furnished rental unit fee, in the back, the page three of three, does, is the language, are you trying to gear this towards single-family homes, or are you gearing this towards apartments? Because the way it reads, the way I understand it, you would be able to charge a 10% monthly fee, or the 10% of the rent as a fee, if an apartment included a stove, oven, refrigerator, microwave. Now, most apartments include that, but for single-family homes, it can be included, it may not be included.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure I thought about whether it applied to one or both. I would think that it applies to, to both single-family and apartment units.
Right. We're talking more furniture, furniture, as opposed to appliances and things like that. So, for example, the property that MHP currently owns, that used to be basically, basically a boarding room over on Maple and Ritchie Avenue, seven, it was a furnished, those are all furnished apartments, with a bed, and dresser, and table. So that's essentially what we're talking about in terms of the furnished rental units, not whether there's a stove or a refrigerator.
Okay, but with the current language, let's just say, I'm the owner of 636 Houston, can I, because I provide a stove, refrigerator, maybe a microwave, can I charge a 10% monthly rent fee?
No, because this is a, this is an and, not an and/or. So it's, furnishings must include a dresser and bed for each of the bedrooms, a sofa, table, and chairs for eating, adequate lighting for each room, a stove or refrigerator, and installed cooktop and a microwave.
So I have to include all those things?
All of those things.
Okay.
It's not pick and choose which ones you want to provide.
Okay, all right, good.
I mean, I think the point is, we don't want somebody to stick a lamp in the apartment or the house and say it's furnished, and charge 10%.
Did you have laundry usage in your list?
Um, no, what we want to have is, because we've had a lot of trouble with laundry fees, and what's included, and how much they can be, is if landlords are going to, if they want to provide laundry, it's with a coin-operated machine.
Okay. And finally, you have the pet fee, but what about once a tenant moves out of the apartment and has a pet? Is there any fee that can be charged to clean the apartment, because the next tenant may be allergic to pets? Or is that a cost that the landlord just has to eat?
Well, landlords, I mean, they can take it out of the security deposit if they're, if there's cleaning that needs to be addressed. Some landlords do, and they're permitted to charge a deposit, a pet deposit, in addition to the regular security deposit, which as long as it doesn't exceed two times the monthly rent, that's permissible. So that's how landlords can deal with that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor Stewart, and thank you so much for bringing this to us. It looks like it's very good. I appreciate your moving kind of the meat of it to the regulations, and putting the fees in a definitive list. I think it's very helpful and valuable. From my experience, I've seen what I would term as abuses, where, you know, more and more fees have been added on, instead of raising rents. My one question with this list, as we have it today, is that some of these things, it seems like the tenant should be able to say, no, I don't want that, because some landlords will add on fees... say, "No, I don't want that," because some landlords will add on fees for things, again, just to pump up the income, when they're services that are not desired by the, by the tenant. But it helps to increase the monthly payment. Is it, is there any way that this can address that?
Um, well, one thing we do is, is say that tenants have to acknowledge that a certain, or the landlord and the tenant have to acknowledge that the fee is optional, and that they have the right to reject it. That's, that's the best-
Okay, so that is in here, though. I didn't see that, okay. Great.
Perlmann, moving things to the regulations, that may be in the regulations.
No, it's in the one.
Is that in the ordinance?
Okay. I thank you.
Senator? Councilmember Kovar?
Just real quickly, can you explain, what's the rationale for moving certain ones into the regulations and leaving the others out? I mean, what, what's the advantage to you in terms of enforcement, or anything else, to him?
Primarily, the ones in the, in the regulation is where we're, we're specifying a maximum. There are fees listed in the code, but, but more by way of example, in the full list, as in the, as in the regulation.
Does that make it easier to change the amounts later, if you need to?
Well, there's some debate of whether it's easier to change the code or the regulations, but in theory, yes.
Councilmember Mail?
Thank you, and I appreciate your work on this. I just wanted to repeat for my colleagues and for the, to the attorney and staff, whenever we move this as an agenda item, I'd prefer to do so accompanied by, and if I need to make an amendment to, or amendment to it, to create an amnesty period, to try to get unregistered rental units, particularly, you know, in a single-family home, a unit registered, so to give them a period, a grace period through which they can maintain a current resident, a current rentor, or if it's a vacant unit, to, to otherwise get in compliance, because I believe we have a significant problem with unregistered units. And so, I just wanted to, to indicate my interest in that, and if there was support to get the city attorney to develop language around that. But if there's not, then I was just indicating I will, I will propose something when we get to, to a, a voting session.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused on that. You want to have something in here that gives a grace period to get compliance, or you wanted something completely different about allowing just a grace period?
Yes.
So, that's not associated with fees?
No, it's not associated with fees.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think that is-
It's associated with the housing section of our code.
Yeah, I think that would be for a different, a different action. I mean, I don't see that as part of this action.
Right. I was just assuming that because it was, it would be determined to the same section of code, that it would be relevant to propose an amendment, but not to amend, not to create text in this section of the ordinance, but rather in the housing section of our code.
So, could we have, when this, when we have this returned to us, could we have the, could we direct the city attorney to look at what part of the housing code would address, would appropriately address the issue at hand, if others on the council are amenable to that?
I would say we could, we could, we could direct the city attorney to do that, regardless of this, this ordinance, right? We could just take a straw boat and say, "Yeah, we wanted to do it."
Well, and we'll be back here on this next week, so.
I just think when we start-
I mean, I guess, normally, something that would be like that, I'm not opposed to it in concept, but usually, there'd be advertising, and, I mean, I-
Right.
I would just consider, I just would prefer it to be a different act.
No, I was, yeah, I was, I was sort of asking for more information, and to see if that was okay with Councilmember Mail, before we voted on it, because I was having the same concerns about making sure people knew we were taking that action, and advertising and doing all of that, since it pertains to a different section of this code. But I guess, what I was thinking is if the staff and the city attorney could come back to us in a couple of weeks.
Right, I wasn't, I wasn't proposing to add it to the ordinance next week.
Yeah. Is that, is that-
Yeah, that's great.
Are other members of the council okay with that?
Just do it.
Just do it, okay.
Do we have the numbers on that? I don't have a sense for how big a problem that is. I'm sure it's a problem, but I'm just curious.
I believe Councilmember Mail has raised this in prior meetings, as something that-
I don't think we can know how big a problem it is, for the precise reason that they're unregistered units.
And I would just say, I agree. I think there's, some instances have come to my attention, and I think part of it is public education as well. And so, I think, thinking through how we do this in a process, before we would put in place an amnesty time period, would be important, because I know, at least in a couple of instances, that people had no clue.
Can I ask a question?
Ms. Daines, do you have any idea if this is an issue?
Excuse me, if I understand the conversation right, the concern is about properties that are currently renting an apartment within the building, or an apartment building, and it's not licensed. What we do now is, when we learn that there's a property that's unlicensed, we notify them that they have to license it. They fill in the paperwork, or document that it's not a rental property. We go through the process. We don't go backwards. We only, they only get a fine, if you will, if they, if we can document 100% that they are actually renting, and there's a body in that unit, and they refuse to license it.
A live body.
A live body, yeah, that is key. And they refuse to license it, then we will take them to court for operating an unlicensed rental facility. But we don't go backwards. So, it may not, an amnesty period may not be needed, based on the current practices that we have now. And that's in a different section of the code. I should know the numbers. I don't. It's earlier in chapter six than this particular one.
So, rather, there may be some just education campaign that needs to happen.
Yeah, but I think it's, I think that it's worth coming back to you with information.
Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, quick question. And that is, these fees, does, does any, does this apply to owner-occupied group homes, these, these fees regulate, these fee regulations? Ms. Daines is shaking her head in a way that would suggest no.
The owner-occupied group homes are a special baby, if you will, and the primary focus there is on the condition of the property. The people that are living in the owner-occupied group home are not considered tenants by definition, the ordinance. So, since these are fees that are applied by landlord to their tenant, it doesn't apply, because they're not actually tenants. It applies purely for licensed rental facilities.
Okay, that's what I was suspecting.
Okay. All right, I think we're done. Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, just a reminder, Saturday is our community conversation. Again, thank you to Ms. Daines for all her work on this. I hope to see everyone back here on Saturday. And please take a look at the vacant properties, the registration of vacant properties, so that we can move that fairly quickly.
And, and the comments can come to me, and I'll make sure that they get distributed to the right people.
Thank you. We're done.
Love it, love it, love it.